All right, we'll call this meeting the order of Chisholm City Council for August 26, 2020. Good evening, everyone. Margaret, could you take roll call, please?
Counselor Lance.
Here.
Counselor Fonten.
Here.
Counselor Vaki.
Here.
Counselor Varda.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Champa.
Here. Adopt the agenda, counsel. You got an email a little while ago from Larry. He wants to make his item an action item. Let me find out where it is. I think everybody probably seen it. Well, it came from Margaret, I apologize. But the the item about the casual labors, he wants to make an action item and.
Mr. Mayor, it's item seven C four.
Seven C four, so that'd be an action item. And then we're trying to have a have a working session. I think Travis' item is the last thing to discuss, so we'll look at the working session at that one. But there's a couple other things to add to it, but they come before. So council motion to accept or adopt the agenda with just changing item seven C four to an action item. I think is all we really need.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
Can I wish my counselor phone second for that?
Support.
Support Counselor Lance. Any discussion? Margaret, roll call.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fonten.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that agenda is adopted, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible for all.
Public participation. We got Shannon from the chamber here. Good evening, Shannon.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Okay, good, all right. So, um. Okay, good. All right, so essentially I have a promotion that I had presented to the Chisholm EDA, which they had said, bring that to the city. So I wanted to present it to you tonight and hopefully you guys are on board with this. Essentially, the the back to business Chisholm cash promotion isn't my idea, but I stole it from the Grand Rapids Area Chamber of Commerce. Bud Stone had kind of sent something out to all of us and I saw it and I liked it. And I thought, hey, I wonder if there's a way for us to do this. So essentially what this is, it's a promotion that if the city funds it is then applicable for all Chisholm businesses and not just chamber businesses. That's why it's the Chisholm cash and not chamber cash promotion. But essentially, we're asking people to purchase $25 in chamber cash, which would come as some one certificate, and then we get $10 in Chisholm cash free. And of course, it's not free because you're paying for that part of it. But essentially, we're offering about 300 certificates of $25 in Chisholm cash, plus 300 certificates, then in $10 of Chisholm cash to be used in a Chisholm business of their choosing. The business would then take that in, do their products, their services, their goods. They turn that into the chamber. I would then cut them a check. But essentially, it's just trying to get a bunch of money back into downtown businesses when they really need it. And then if you look at the actual, the proposal where I have the breakdown of it, the total cost of this promotion is $10,500, which is then fed into the businesses. And we're asking the city for $7,250. And you can kind of see the breakdown here. You can see the income is the 7250 from the city to fund it. Sales then, which is the people buying the $25 certificate, for a total of $14,750. From that, we want to do $1,000 in advertising, saying, of course, the Chisholm cash back to business promotion funded by the City of Chisholm, in part by the chamber. $1,000 in advertising, which includes $500 in radio, $400 in newspaper, and $100 in a Facebook boost. You can see the Chisholm cash actually face value is $10,500 for a total of $11,500. With the remainder of the money going back to the chamber to set that up, we would be the ones getting all the advertising online. We would be the ones that we would be creating and promoting the certificates. We would be the ones that would be handling all the bills, pay to the businesses, selling the cash. I actually have had an inquiry today where people can stop by. Our office should be open back to our regular kind of hours of about nine to three or so, beginning in September. But they could stop in, they could call, they could email, and hopefully we can get this online to sell it that way as well via PayPal like we do at the escape rooms. So different ways for people to pick that up. But I thought it was just a good little promotion, I guess, to to get things, hopefully, money spent back downtown. So I know I went through that quickly. I always talk fast, but look it over and let me know if you guys have questions.
Also, this is later on in the agenda. Shannon is here now if you have questions about the program.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Shannon, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Is this going to be, I mean, I'm all for it, but is this going to be? So you buy $25, you get $10 free, is going to be one certificate for $35 in or two certificates?
It's actually, it is going to be two certificates then, just because, as we had thought too, there might be some businesses where it's hard to spend 25. So that way, they've got a $10 certificate too, like something if you go into healthy bump or something like that. So you've got your 25 and you've got your two.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you're 25 and you're 10 women, so two certificates.
Counsel, anything else for Shannon?
I just say thank you, Shannon, for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. We'll let Shannon go unless she wants to hang around for the whole meeting.
Oh, there you are for a little bit while it's working.
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon.
We'll move on to reports. Who started with Counselor Lance tonight? Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, good evening, everybody else, counsel, mayor, administrator, city. Nothing really formal. I'd just like to say, I hope it's not just coincidence, but it seems like we have less geese around the lake. So hopefully that is working. If not, I'll take it anyways. Also, a quick, a little shout out, don't want to go into any depth or detail, but I just do want to say thank you to the businesses and Hibbing that helped out with all the responders yesterday. We had a lot of businesses sending off food and supplies and Gatorade and water. We had a lot of people on the street for a long time, you know, doing a lot of work. It was really hot. So thank you. And a lot of private citizens that went over their way to come down and, you know, got a pat on the back and drop off some water and snacks. So it was very good to see a community come together like that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Adam. Counselor Campbell, report.
Just a short one. Last night, I attended an auxiliary ambulance meeting and we talked a little bit about that accident that happened on the Redhead Mountain Bike Trail. And it just so happens that that accident took place where they trained. So it kind of, you know, they got lucky there. But there were some questions that they wanted me to ask and maybe I can get some answers from somebody. Some of those trail signs that co assigned with the the Trail Forks app are missing the numbers. So like number 22 on the Trailhead sign or on the on the Trailhead app, there's no sign for number 22 on the sign. So that would have really have helped for locating when they responded. Do you know, does anybody know when those numbers are going to get installed on those signs?
I can look into that for you, if you want, Tracy. I reviewed it with Roland and stuff and that's the first I heard, but I can definitely get that for you.
Yeah, I said I would get back to them. So if you could let me know, that'd be great. But it was, I mean, they ended up doing okay and thank God we had that that UTV. That was a big, big help for them and I just want to thank them for everything they did. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Tracy. Counselor Vaki, report tonight.
Nothing formal, just as Adam, you know, just echoed to Adam, it was great to see a community come together for that, for that horrible situation that happened last night in Hibbing. I wish the best for all those businesses and families that were involved in it. And again, thank you to the firefighters of Chisholm for responding to that also. That's all I got.
Thank you, Travis. Counselor Fonten, report tonight.
No formal report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April. Counselor Varda, Jim, report tonight.
Just a short one. I would like to go with Adam's thanks to Hibbing. And just a special report for you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting has caused me to stop the RNC tonight. Stop watching it.
What's, what did? You're not watching the convention?
I do, I watch them both.
Perfect.
That's it.
Uh, report tonight. I don't know if anybody has seen this thing. Came across our emails, I think, where did we get it from? Let me see. But anyway, St. Louis County Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grants. Did we talk about this at all yet, Bill? Do you recall? Did anybody bring this up? EDA, anybody?
No, Mayor, I did forward that on to the EDA consultants.
Let me, yeah. Let me read it since I have it on the screen. Phase one of St. Louis County Business COVID-19 Relief Grants. Phase one grant assistance will focus on businesses and nonprofits with 25 or fewer full-time employees. These businesses may apply for assistance equivalent to $1,000 per employee up to a maximum of $25,000 for COVID-related expenses incurred by the business, such as to purchase PPE, clean and squish signage, and safety barriers. Application period Monday, August 24, 2020, 8:00 a.m. to Monday, September 7, 2020, 8:00 a.m. Website to go to www.stlewiscountymn.gov/cares for additional information. That'd be good for businesses that are trying to be open and need PP and stuff. There's going to be another phase to that. Little bigger here with over 100 employees starting September 8th. So certainly look into that. What else? Couple of meetings, HRA meeting. We're scratching our head a little bit about what happened to our contractor to tear down that burned building that we approved last meeting. We directed it to the city attorney to get a letter out to try to figure out if the contractor's showing up or if we're going to contractor number two. We had our first meeting with our new board member, so that was good to have another person. I believe we still have an opening for one more on the HRA. So anybody wants to apply, we'll look at putting the person on there. What else? What else? PUC meeting. I don't know if Bill wants to report on that when we get to him. I had to leave early. I had a meeting with Congressman Stauber to just see if there's anything we can do or he can do for us. I mentioned a couple of things that are the EDAs discussing right now. And hopefully, he can give us some help when they come out of the EDA. I think that's about it unless counsel has any questions on any of that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Concerned with the HRA.
Yep.
Um, are they talking about, are they going to fix that garage at the Lincoln Apartments there? That garage door's been open for like six months now and folded in?
Yes, that's also an item that we're fighting with insurance companies over. I, you know, you buy insurance. You're wasting your time trying to get paid. It really does. Yeah, basically, I think we already have estimates and we're trying to, we're going to get it fixed. But at this point, I don't think we've gotten a penny one from the insurance. So it was actually, the person that hit it, we're dealing with their insurance, so it isn't even ours in this case. But yes, that was discussed and the same question asked.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Before winter. Two hot button items. Well, just let me add one more thing to my report. I just want to congratulate Counselor Campbell's retiring soon with her last day tomorrow. I'm going to use up some vacation, so congratulations to her.
Thank you, thank you.
Long, long career and I'm sure she's ready for her next chapter. I joked with her before the meeting that she's going to be like a bowl of Jell-O on January 1st, when she's no longer on the council and she's no longer has a job. So maybe she'll get on my HRA board.
Hey, you know, I might do that if you'd have me.
So that's all I have. We'll move on down the list here. Building official Mandy reports tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I do have a quick report tonight. I don't have anything on the agenda, so I thought I would give a quick report of how things are going permit-wise. To date, we have a total of 98 permits with a total value of $1,193,838. So work is really up and everybody's getting permits and calling for inspections, which is really good. So with that, we have taken in a total fee of $7,338.41. So that's really good for not even finishing the third quarter yet. So because we still have a full month in the third quarter. So we're doing really good permit-wise. I do have, I will, I'm hoping to have on the next agenda, a new residential redevelopment application for five houses, actually. Three of them are structures that have been burned that we just need to get down. And then one is currently the pigeon house that I need to talk with Attorney Lindsay about, just to make sure, I don't know if you need any more info from me to start condemnation procedure procedures on that property. But once I get that going, I'll have five properties and I can get the application rolling. But so far in for 2020, we've collected a total amount of $46,497 through that program. So I'm really happy with that. And with these five houses, that will really up the number for the year. So I'm excited about to get that done. And I think that's about it unless anyone has any questions. Maybe not.
Mandy, did we get the initial letter out yet on this super duper store with? We had discussed up a week ago.
Yes, and and there has been no contact. So that would be another one that we could actually start with Attorney Lindsay on going through condemnation. Because I have tried several times and there's been no response with the owner.
So I'd appreciate reach out to him. Like you said, that's, that's something you guys can work on together if you need to bring. Certainly do, but I mean, something has to happen down there.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm really not surprised that I haven't received any communication back because I'm still waiting on three rental licensing fees from them. So, um, yeah, I think it's just time to go through legal action on that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mandy.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Mandy, how are you?
Good.
But I'm afraid, or I think I've been telling people the wrong thing, so I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
There's a few people that want to put decks up, but they're not going to attach them to the house. Do they need a permit for that?
Yes, yes.
Then I have to tell them the wrong thing.
Yeah, you still need a permit if it's unattached. It doesn't have to meet a frost footing if it's unattached. However, if it is over 30 inches above grade, it needs handrails and guardrails. So that would be, that would be the cause for the permit, to make sure the handrails and guardrails are up to code.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Counsel, anything else from Mandy? Thank you, Mandy, we'll move on.
Thank you.
City engineer, Jim, report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have no formal report. I've just got a number of items on the council agenda that cover most of the information. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have at this time, however.
Counsel, questions for Jim Johnson? Jim, just a quick question. Can I assume you got the email from Norm Miranda today?
Yes, yep.
But inflow and the sand and.
Yeah, Larry and I are following up on that with the engineering firm and with the contractor.
Okay. Counsel, just to get you up to speed, we, if you haven't heard yet, we have, we knew we were getting a bunch of inflow water. That's part of the reason for some of our testing. But Norm Miranda from the Central Iron Rain Sand and very sure district sent out an email today that this last rain, there was a lot of sand that came in too. So we're trying to figure out if it possibly has something to do with the the loop, the utility loop near where the public safety building would be. So that's all.
Mayor?
Yes, Travis, if that was you.
Just a couple of things, one to add on to that. Actually, our, the catch basins were clogged here by my place and Tom and Jerry's, which I cleared out. But there was an awful lot of sand or dirt or whatever you want to call it that flowed down our street here. So I don't know what caused that or where it came from. But even the neighbor came out and he's like, where is all this coming from? So I don't know if you were, Larry, knew that or not. But the other thing is a question for Jim. Jim, have you talked or have you thought about anything or any type of scenario to at least temporary temporarily fix the nine and a half street pumps that are beyond horrible? That might be the worst road in Chisholm.
It's to slow down speed, Travis, no. Larry and I are talking about it. Basically, the storm sewer at that intersection are way too shallow and there, there's frost heaving. And even Ninth, no, that's, yeah, Ninth Street itself has some reconstruction issues. So I think we're looking at that as possibly being a future capital improvement program along Nine and a Half Street and along Central Avenue. Because we've got a, we can take the storm sewer all the way down, a block and a half to the south or two blocks to the south, down to the Crickin outlet at there as well. There's not permanent street to on Central Avenue or down on Eighth Avenue either. So we've got that on our list. Couple of years ago, at that intersection, we just put on an overlay to try and lessen the humps. But they've come back with more heaving of those storm sewer pipes on all four quadrants of that intersection. So we could, we could try and do that again, but it's going to take more, more of a permanent fix in the long run, Travis.
Okay, thank you, just curious.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
So in front of my house too, I clean the catch basins after every rain because I'm in a low spot. So I learned my lesson over the years, but I had a lot of sand also. I don't know, I don't know where it's coming from, but noticeably more than normal.
Basically, with the very intense rainfall that we've been having, where we're getting an inch an hour or something, there's so much quantity that it accumulates and it starts washing. I'm, I'm a township road supervisor and we have a lot of those types of washouts. And it takes especially the fines and coming out of the alleys, coming out of driveways and so forth. It's bringing it into our storm sewer system. But why it's in the sanitary sewer system is is a bigger question that we're dealing with per Norm's email. Because I think Larry said they found it in that new 36-inch diameter sanitary sewer on the backside of the proposed public safety building. So but on our streets and catch basins and so forth, yes, there is a tremendous amount of sand being washed because of the intensity of the rainstorms we've had recently.
I would add what Jim said to it. Just stuff that just never gets washed is now getting washed and you get that five inches in two hours. So yeah, every alley, every sidewalk, every driveway, that's really where it's coming from. So.
Hey, Larry. Larry. And Jim, I do, I do want to say that that stuff you put down in my alley really held up nice with this rain. It really didn't, didn't even wash away. So I mean, that stuff, whatever it was, was working pretty good.
Yeah, it's got a lot of concrete and by two minutes in it. So especially with the by two minutes, there's enough oil still left in it. When it gets baked by the sun during the summer months, it actually starts to bind up, almost becomes kind of a rough by two minutes pavement. But I even have some of that on my own driveway. But with the last couple of rainstorms, I had some of that even washing out and rutting. But it is a good product. Thank you, Tracy.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Larry on this.
Go ahead, Jim.
All right, thanks for the honor.
Hey, Larry, Larry, how are you?
Good, just no video tonight, but I'm good, thank you.
Is it possible for by Counselor Vaki's and Counselors Campbell's houses that there may be a little water leak that we don't know about or some sand?
Nah, I don't think so. I really, it's, we're just seeing it everywhere. Jim, it's able to wash out of every alley, every hill and it's just, yeah, we just can't keep up, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Jim, just to follow up on that, the one by Counselor Vaki's house makes a lot of sense. There's a parking lot about a block away that's on a hillside that they're trying to get paved right now. They're trying to put together the funding. So and that's a dirt parking lot. It's probably just, you know, probably 50 by 125 or whatever. So my guess is they lost a lot of dirt on that one.
Yeah, we did on the alleys as well. But our bigger issue per Norm's email today is why was it showing up in our, that new 36-inch sanitary sewer? Was it, you know, some interconnection or was there something that happened during construction? Or have we got a sinkhole somewhere nearby? So that's what we're trying to follow up, investigate why it's in the sanitary sewer system. We expect it in the storm sewer system.
All right, good. All right, we'll move on. Public Works, Larry, report.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. No video tonight. It was in and out. My signal, signal wasn't strong enough, so, but I'll be here. Just let me know if you have questions. We continue to work with the Jones sign and now Masabi sign out of Virginia on the east entrance, the placement and installation of that. It's going to be a beautiful sign. Every time I see the drafts and the paperwork on that area, it's truly going to be great. I had it on my list to talk about alleys and washouts. And I'll start with battling. We continue to battle through the manpower shortage. I actually had a day last week where I didn't have one Public Works employee. I have one guy right now out of four. You know, we're, we're filling in those other departments and street hurts. And then so be, to be able to run the sweeper, it's just, it's impossible, basically. And then when we, those storms come through on top of the sweeping that isn't getting done, we got, I get calls that limbs aren't getting picked up on boulevards and it's just all over. It's around the lake, it's everywhere. But we're going to battle through it like we always do and and we'll get there. You'll see the stuff on the agenda. You're probably well aware of what the hiring and moving around that we're doing. So we're back on our safety meeting rotation and talks. We're talking about the budgeting coming for next year and capital equipment and projects. And those conversations continue to move forward. The way I would, I would also say the way with yeast, some of the feedbacks I've gotten is people have never seen yeast in these particular areas. And, and really, I think it's true to the, true to the product that it annoys them, they go away. And then now they're in an area that also annoys them. So we, you know, because it's louder traffic, there's more lights, the freeways there. I'm seeing at the Ironman, the east entrance in the town. And it's, I think they'll continue to move on. So I really think they're working and which has been great. And then we were able to get some test flights up. And then we were able to get some test lights up on the southeast side of the lake walk in the disc golf course. Me and Tammy are kind of partnering on a project to see if it's, can save us some money on streetlights in the future around the lake. Um, nothing else really. I got a, quite a few things on the agenda. So unless you have anything for me, I'll, I'll sit here and wait for that.
Counselor questions for Larry?
I, I have one.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hey, Trey.
Hi. How many lights did you put up, Larry? Are those those solar lights?
Yep. Yeah, we put up four and we selected a amount of like a review of ten. And these ones have the ability, the charging panel is, is pretty vertical. So we, we think it's going to help get the snow off. Or some of them are built into the light. So they're just like hardly any, any ability for the snow to fall off. So we're hoping.
Okay, I'll have to check them out. Thanks.
Yep, right out of the parking lot, the disc golf parking lot there just straight to the north. There's four in a row.
Counselor, anything else for Larry? Fire Chief, good evening. Bob, report tonight.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, City Administrator, City Attorney, fellow supervisors in the public. I would like to echo what some of you have already spoke. The great job that was done yesterday in Hibbing. I know I'm on a short vacation, golfing vacation here, and I missed out on all the excitement, but I know the staff that was there worked very, very hard. They started at about ten thirty in the morning. Most of them didn't get back into town till around four or five o'clock. So and then when they get back into town, there's still a lot of recovery and things that they had to do in the firehouse. I'd really like to extend a thank you to everybody involved with that. And it was nice to hear all the accolades from the citizens of Hibbing that coming out to support everybody. And just the, all the members on scene there, they did a great job keeping that fire to that one building. As was mentioned too, we had another big event last Thursday with the Redhead Bike Trail. That involved our PD ambulance and we had a lot of help getting a lot of this equipment into town from Larry Falsted too. And all that equipment worked out and that was the same area that we had trained in a couple of months ago. Where we had the incident last Thursday with the person from out of town that had a leg injury. And the posts that are up, they still need some more numbering. I think that would have helped us locate that. It was a big learning thing for us. As much as we tried training with the equipment, it was a good learning for all of us. I know Captain Worley and a lot of the other members that were there did some more adjusting on the equipment. The smaller groups are going to be going through and reviewing all that access to that where we housed that up in the fairground areas there. Appreciate the help we're getting from Counselor Campbell and Mr. Falsted there and getting those numbers up on those posts. If I can give any help, please let me know. Also, we got our engine one back into town last Thursday or Friday, I believe it was. It was out of town for three weeks. We had some work done on the pump. We had a leaky tank that was covered under warranty and we also had some problems with our foam system. So the other thing that we applied for and got a grant for well over four grand from the Minnesota Board of Fire Training and Education, or it adds up to about $200 a firefighter that we can use for training during this upcoming year. So that's also good news. I'll get that paperwork to you so you can adopt that as a resolution, I believe is what the council normally does. Any questions for me?
Counselor, questions for the Fire Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Advisor, is Katie on tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
She's not.
All right, move on. Police Chief.
I don't have anything. I'm on the agenda. Have a report on there. So I have nothing unless there's questions of me, sir.
Counselor, anything for the chief? Thank you, Vern. Rec Director Tammy, you on tonight? Yes, you are. I seen you earlier.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and everyone. Um, just a quick report. The pickleball fencing has been installed in a couple of poles by the hockey rink and it really does really improve the aesthetics of that area. We're still waiting on the pickle line, pickleball lines to be repaired. Jim has been in contact and waiting for them to contact him back on when they're coming. And just the solar lights, I went out there last night and looked at them. I'm looking at maybe we, if we could adjust the heads of them a little bit higher. That way maybe we'd get more of a spread of light, but otherwise I'd just like to thank Larry and his crew because they've been super busy and they've been doing stuff for my department. So that's about all I have for now. I have an item later on.
Thank you, Tammy. Counselor, any questions for Tammy at this point? All right, move on. Thank you, Tammy. City Attorney, report tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No formal report.
Counselor, anything for the attorney? Brian, question for you. I have one. I don't know where I read it, maybe in my email or read in the newspaper, something about can we do evictions now? Did something change like a day or two ago?
Uh, Mayor, not, not to the best of my recollection, there has been some update relative to the executive order that's been issued relative to evictions and termination of lease rights. As I understand it, and, and I'll, I'll go back and double check, but as I understand it, it's still the, the standard is still the health and safety type standard for commencing one of those actions.
Okay. What, we have a mobile home, whatever you call those things up at the campground that we still have a resident in. Have we sent out a letter telling them that, you know, when we can, we do intend to evict them and clean that area up? Have we sent that letter yet?
Mayor, I, I have not sent that letter, but I do believe that that has been communicated to them.
Okay. Any update on downstairs of City Hall?
Uh, the last, last communication I, I received from our, our former tenant downstairs was that they were doing all that they could, but they had some health, health issues within their organization that have kind of slowed things down. I will follow up again though.
All right. Counselor, anything else for the attorney before we move on?
Yeah. Hey, Brian, I guess just just maybe echo what the mayor was saying there. So I've had communication from some people who might be interested in the downstairs of City Hall. So I mean, is there, I mean, I know we can't, I mean, do we have options to move it forward a little quicker?
I'll, I'll look into the options. The COVID pandemic has kind of put a, a real damper on, on our ability to do much. But I will, I will look to see if we've got some options available to us or if we can kind of come up with some creative solutions to try and get that space freed up.
All right, thank you.
Brian, Adam here. Um, one thing kind of echo what Mayor Champa did with the change in the eviction process. I believe they did change it. If you started the eviction process before his first order, you know, you are allowed to follow through with it. I can't remember if we started before his order or not, but it was something to look at.
Yep. And that, the, that change came, I believe in, in executive order twenty, it was around twenty seventy-nine. And the change was that if you had had a writ of recovery in hand at the time the pandemic began, at the time of the lockdown, the sheriffs were now allowed to execute those writs and move people out.
Uh, Brian, when, when did we start that process? Do you know? I thought it was before this.
We had a, we had a lease termination that had gone out previously, but we did not have a writ of recovery in hand.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, City Administrator, report tonight. Bill, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councillors. Uh, Mayor, you brought up earlier about the PUC and the only recommendation from the PUC is under Larry, item five, an addendum to the flow monitoring and plus there's going to be addition to that. So I'll let Larry talk about that and be willing to provide any follow up to what Larry's comments will be on his item. Then I have a couple of items what I consider to be good news. We received our health insurance increase from the Northeast Service Co-op the other day. They are now, the Northeast Service Co-op with our insurance, they're affiliated with a statewide pool, which spreads out to risk, which is a good thing. From what I've read, health insurance increases are going to be anywhere from four to forty percent for two thousand twenty-one, most of them in the four to 10% range. And our increase is four point eight percent. So we're on the lower end of the spectrum, which I expected just based on some things that I'm aware of that, that was going to be higher than that. So I consider that to be good news, a four point eight percent health insurance increase for two thousand twenty-one. Second item of good news is we received today from or we received our two thousand nineteen taconite production tax revenue. And in our budget, we had sixty-eight thousand, and this is again for two thousand and nineteen payable in two thousand and twenty. We received one hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars. So we received forty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars more than we had in our budget. So that's great news. Other than that, I have a couple of items on the agenda. I didn't entertain any questions.
Counselor, any questions? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Bill. All right, that concludes our reports. We'll move on to consent agenda. This is your list of bills that Eileen emailed out just before the council meeting. So that should be in your email. Airport Authority Minutes, Public Utilities Commission Minutes, Library Report, Minutes of Previous City Council Meetings, uh, August fifth, twenty twenty, working session for public safety building, August twelfth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, August seventeenth, twenty twenty, joint meeting with Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority. Payroll and overtime. Could I get a motion to accept consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to accept the consent agenda. Counselor Campbell?
Support, Counselor.
Motion made by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Varda. Um, just, just a note on this for Margaret, if you're listening, make sure before the next council meeting, we just had our HRA meeting last Thursday. So it was kind of tight, but I want to make sure we get the HRA that this will be the first approved minutes since I gave everybody the packet. So if you don't see them here in the next week or so, let me know. So I'll, I'll make sure we get them. So we have them for the next meeting. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance?
Aye.
Counselor phone.
Hi.
Counselor Vaki?
Aye.
Counselor Varda?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Champa?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Unfinished business. Before I turn this over to Bill, you'll see later on in the meeting, Travis hopes to hold a, a working session with the Discovery Center. I think Bill hopes to hold a CARES funding. We have a lot of requests and thoughts coming in from different directions. So I think he hopes to include that in that working session. And then this first item under new business with the public safety building, got a bunch to discuss. And if it kind of goes sideways, we may look at doing that as well by adding that to that meeting as well. So I'll start with this one. Bill, you got things to talk about with the CARES funding tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Um, I'd like to start on page nineteen of your packet. And I'd like to start off by saying this list that's provided, I'm going to talk about, isn't the end all be all yet. I am receiving daily other recommendations from department heads and people, city employees and the like. So the item I wanted to point out on page nineteen is on the memo, the brief memo there, the second paragraph or sentence that says the funds need to be spent by November fifteenth of this year. So it's very important to keep that date in mind. That will be here before we know it. This is the, the first wave of information. And as the mayor mentioned, you know, to provide you with this information and expect decisions tonight, I don't think is, is fair to any of you. I think you need time to look at it and prioritize. And, and that's why I mentioned to the mayor, it might be a good idea being we're looking at having a working session is incorporating some further discussion on what you feel are the priorities, at least in your mind, what are the priorities? If you flip to page twenty, that's kind of the, I'll call page twenty, the recap page, the pots of money page. It's, it's kind of a, a one-page overview of the funds that are out there to be spent. So it's important. I want to go through the first part of that, the funds received. So the federal funds through the Minnesota Department of Revenue, the federal CARES Act funding that we received is the top line, item third, three hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. The I triple R B taconite area, area relief grant that we applied for, if you recall, one-third was for COVID assistance to the community. One-third for new business development and the other third for existing business development and expansion. So this is listed as the, the, the second bullet point there, the I triple R B taconite air leaf grant, one-third of the hundred twenty-five thousand is forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The city match, this was a one to four. Most I triple R Bs are one to one. So that's why this was such a good deal is that for every dollar we put up, we got four back. So the city's match is thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. The other two thirds of that I triple R B grant that I just mentioned is eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three. And then the EDA previously requested funds from the city to assist with some COVID relief items of twenty-five thousand dollars that was granted on the July eighth council meeting. So you can see the total is five hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and five dollars. So over a half a million dollars that has, has to be prioritized in, in your decision on how we best leverage and spend these funds to benefit the citizens of the, of our community. So I wanted to point out that number. The next category is funds to date. So the money, that twenty-five thousand dollars that I just mentioned, the last item under the funds received, the EDA at their last meeting made a motion to purchase face masks for basically the whole city. Eighteen hundred for the schools and one thousand for the public for a total of twenty-eight hundred masks at four dollars and fifty cents. So that's twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. And there's going to be different sizes and the like. And Travis and Adam, and anything you want to add there? I know you were, were, were part of this, but I think it's a great thing with the, with the governor's executive order and the mandate that a part of the funds went to purchase masks for the entire community. And then the EDA hired the consultants that met with all the businesses in town with the COVID assistant funding. There were some deadlines that have come and gone. There, there are some grants that have gone out to the community. And their recommendations on how we spend the rest of the money will be coming up. Plus they're working on other things with the business community. So there's two consultants at forty-six hundred each is the ninety-two hundred. So the date, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred has been spent and that was spent out of the twenty-five thousand that went to the EDA. The next segment of the sheet is potential options to spend remaining funds. And there's more items to add to this list. This is what was, or this is what I had the time, at the time the council packet went out. And the items that are listed here are on the pages to follow. And we'll talk about the numbers here in a second. But one thing I just wanted to point out is that there, to keep in mind, the last bullet point there talks about grants to Range Regional Medical Center, Chisholm Schools, Range Regional Airport, St. Louis County and others. A, a use, an approved use of COVID funds is grant, grants to other government agencies that may have need for some funding. Oh, to talk about some of those numbers on page twenty-one, I had our owner's rep. Oh, to talk about some of those numbers on page twenty one, um, I had our owners rep come in and take a look at um City Hall and the library because uh strictly my opinion um that when City Hall reopens, um, we need to not only protect our employees, but also protect the public from whether it be this pandemic or the next one. And so everybody's familiar with City Hall where people come in and pay their bills, um, the main customer service desk to rearrange that space and provide uh security as it's listed there. Uh, protection um from um viruses and the like, thirty six thousand two hundred dollars. Um, when you go across to the office where we have our administrative assistant, our building official and our rec director um to to secure that part of the building, um, twelve thousand six hundred. And then we met, went to the library and met with our librarian and uh people that work with her on what they felt they needed um for their safety and the estimated toll. These are all estimates. These are not bid numbers. These are just ballpark estimates, nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So with City Hall and the library, there's a potential of, again, an estimate of sixty eight thousand six hundred dollars that could be spent. Flipping over to page twenty two, so pages twenty two, twenty three are from the consultants. Um, so in addition to the businesses that they've reached out to. Um, I asked them, based on their conversations with business, what they're, what they know and what they're working with on COVID um funding and what's available, what their recommendation would be to spend the funds that we have avail available that I outlined previously. And I'm not going to go through all these. You can take a look at them. Um, but it starts off with um. You know, there's a big number there, a hundred thirty thousand to protect ex sanitation products. Um, basically what that is, uh, there's technology out there with uh sanitation spray that uh the city buildings, it it lasts for apparently ninety days. I'm not real familiar with it. Um, but it continues on into other uh potential um areas that that could be that application could be applied to. And you can read for yourself down the list there on page twenty two. And then you get into page twenty three. Um, well, page twenty two was strictly the three hundred and seventy two thousand of CARES Act funding. When you get into page twenty three, it's the I triple R B grant, the city match, um, and the funds that were awarded from the city to the E D A C D A. So that lays out their recommendations. And then on page twenty four, um, and this will also be later under the agenda under Counselor Vaki. And this is what our chamber director Shannon had talked about, the Chisholm Chamber Cash Proposal. Because it is to stimulate business due to COVID, it would be an eligible expense of seven thousand two hundred and fifty. There are also some other things that have brought up been brought up, such as um, I know uh our public works supervisor Larry Folstead, and I don't have a number on this yet. But all the city buildings have automated um hand soap, um, turning on and off the hot water in in the faucets. Basically hands free, um, you know, restroom as far as cleaning up and sanitary and safety. Um, there's been a request for uh looking at the possibly some water heaters. There's been um requests for looking at possibly because of COVID and how everybody is affected differently, possibly um a mental health program where employees or people or the community um could reach out to people if they're facing challenges. So on these pages, as I mentioned previously, this isn't meant to be all inclusive. This is meant to get you the information for you to review. And uh hopefully uh this will be part of the working session that will be set. Uh, I'm guessing for next week sometime because we're going to have to start making some decisions. You don't have to make them all at once. But to spend this money, uh, at least the the CARES Act funding, the three hundred and seventy two thousand by November fifteenth, we have to start making some decisions here pretty quick. So the intent would be if if this is part of a working session held next week, then the action item would go to the council meeting on September ninth. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll entertain any questions.
Counselor, questions at this point? Did a good job, Bill. No questions. All right, we'll move on to new business. Um. We have on the line with us tonight Scott Sissala. Uh, I kind of dropped the ball on this because I wanted to do two different things here tonight. Maybe Scott's prepared, even though I didn't tell him what the other one was. But um after our working session with five bugles, they have a couple of things that they wanted or they needed from us to kind of finish the the bid documents. Um, one of the main ones is how we, as a as a council, would like to bid this project, should we move forward with it? Uh, would we like to have it done as a construction manager or as a general contractor bid? Um, Scott and his real job um does it both ways. And uh so uh he he didn't want to push one way or the other, but I was hoping he could present what the two different ways are and 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 how they differ for the council. So we could make an educated decision um on if uh this project should be built with a construction manager or a general contractor. Uh, the other item that we need to discuss is basically the list of items that we discussed with five bugles on how we would add them to our bidding process, uh, and add alternates or include them right away type of thing. Uh, if Scott has that in front of him, I I think I would just look to him for a recommendation on how to do that because he 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 would know probably more so, uh, being involved with bidding processes, how it would benefit the city better if it was included upfront or if it was an ad alternate. But mainly, it would be so we can see uh uh, the cost of a particular thing if we needed to pull it out at the last second so we could build the building. So I'll turn it over to Scott. The main thing I wanted to have him talk a little bit about is the difference between this construction manager and the bidding process with a where we bid to a general contractor or the general contractors bid to us. So, good evening, Scott.
Hello, Mayor, councilors. Well, like like the mayor had said, there's two real options of how you bid the project, whether it's a general contractor, a construction manager. And differences between the two, general contractor, you're going to have a job superintendent that would be from the general contractor, and you would have one single contract for the entire project, which would be through that general contractor. And typically, they would carry the bond, uh, payment and performance bond for the project. So if there's any issues, you have a single contact to go through. Construction manager side, you have a job super that is hired by the construction manager. And there's multiple bid packages, meaning they will break the project. That's why the architect wants to know that upfront. They'll break it into packages. They'll have a concrete section, a window section, an overhead door section, and they might pile some of those together. And that process, you would have multiple bids and then the each of those individual groups have to carry their own bond. So that means the overhead door guy will carry the bond for the overhead doors, the window manufacturer will carry. So there's a bunch of little bonds. And then the owner would have multiple contracts that they would be responsible for ultimately at the end, but the construction manager will manage those contracts through the construction process. And a lot of times what will happen is smaller projects, usually the construction managers don't get involved at all because there's, there isn't a, there isn't, they don't need a job super, there isn't enough funds there to cover that. A general contractor will usually handle anything. I'll just say typically ten million dollars and under. Once, the only reason a general contractor wouldn't chase a project that got too big is their bonding capacity is usually limited to depending what the size of their company is. They they may carry they may be carrying twenty five million dollars of bonding capacity a year. So if they're doing a twenty million dollar project, they're committing they're, they have a little bit of risk. They're committing all of their bonding funds to that single project. So if something goes wrong, they they only have bonding capacity. The construction manager side, they have the capacity because they're not carrying the bond, they're have the, each of the individual contractors carrying that bond. So they will usually, when you get to a project that's say ten million and up, they'll, you'll see more often than not that a construction manager do it because the can, the general contractor doesn't either have the capacity or want to have that risk of carrying that much bond. So the majority of it is related to the bonding capacity. And then the actual process of how you run the project. Does that make sense? Questions?
Well, you know, it makes sense to me, Scott. I've uh, you know, I'm not familiar with the construction management uh side of it. Uh, everything, you know, being a contractor myself, I've I've always bid to general contractors. Um, and I've been involved with projects uh that have used basically have always used a a general contractor. The part I like myself is that uh, there's basically one superintendent running the whole project. Uh, they're holding, uh, you know, they're 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 the one that signs a contract with us, and they're basically holding all the the generals responsible themselves. I get a little bit leery when we're holding um all the contracts and, you know, even our you know, and and you know, and and then the construction manager kind of oversees the project. So.
And that that's one of the, one of, I'll say, an advantage of the general contractor, if it fits into that bonding capacity is if you have an issue, or even if I'm the architect that's watching over the project, I have one point of contact that I'm going to say. Okay, we need this addressed. The contract is with you, general contractor. You need to address it rather than say, okay, was it the window guy that is the is the window leaking because the window guy didn't do his job or is the culker that didn't do his job? Or is it the carpenter that didn't put the window in? If you have a single contract with a general contractor, it's their responsibility. And yes, the construction manager, you can put that responsibility on him through the through the construction process, but there's always a few issues after that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
So it sounds like the general contractor be the way to go on pending if they had the bonding capacity is what what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
I I know I prefer it. You know, the way I see it, we have a general contractor. They're in charge of the whole project of you know, I kind of hired Scott and got him in early because, you know, my hope is that he would, you know, you know, do that, do, you know, be our owners rep during this. He he wouldn't be acting as a construction manager. Basically, he'd be our middleman between the city uh and the general contractor to to make sure our terms are met and the project is being done the way uh it's supposed to be. But other than that, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it sure sounds like it's probably the easiest way to go to instead of having a bunch of um different contractors working, you know, and it makes a lot easier. We're just having the one person and the one contractor deal with everything.
You're going to have a similar pool of people, but it's just the contract. So you'll have one person you're dealing with.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, good.
I think we spoke about this uh at a few meetings back and we, when we all started talking about this, and we wanted a uh construction manager, uh, generally in construction so that we could do the bidding on multiple bidding packages. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, if wasn't this talked about?
If I might, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I I was kind of an advocate for the construction management, be uh, not so much because of the bid packages. But I wanted somebody that was representing the interest of the city and what was in the city's best interests, whereas a general contractor is looking at their own pocket. But Bill and I talked about this this afternoon, and I think just what you talked about, I would feel very comfortable with, and I think is the right way to go to just put it together with uh as one bid package with the general contractor uh with there being an owner's representative. And I guess that's when we uh brought Scott on board, it was kind of with my understanding that he was going to be our construction manager. Bill tells me he really doesn't do that, but if he would serve as our owner's rep, I would feel very, very good and very comfortable with that because uh, he was brought in during the design process, so he knows all the iterations, what's been discussed, what's not been discussed, the pros, the cons and and so forth. So I would totally endorse uh going with a general contractor. Um, with uh, with with Scott being our owner's representative. Thank you.
It's just a matter, it's some semantics there. As far as the title of construction manager versus owner's representative, I I would not be, like you said, I would not be the construction manager because I'm not going to be the job foreman that's sitting there on a daily basis. We would be there as needed, at least weekly during construction and making sure that everything was put together as if you guys have questions, the availability of us to be there to make sure that the best interests of the city of Chisholm are being met is the key there.
So.
I would agree with that. I'm sorry.
Almost like the project manager in a way, then, uh, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Right.
So that's the process I like. And uh you know, I mean, that's, I don't know, did we answer April's question? I don't know if I completely understood her question. So I don't know that we answered.
I I think I did, Mayor, because I was the one that was uh proposing construction management because I was looking for uh that owner's representative to be representing uh the city's interests at the table. But basically, uh, the way we're proposing now really accomplishes both purposes uh that I think are very good. Uh, it puts the owner's responsibilities totally on the general contractor. But we have an owner's representative that's sitting at the table and Bill kind of um indicated to me that they and projects he's been involved in. And I think some of them with Scott where, you know, there's a weekly construction status meeting that's sitting down with the general contractor, with the owner's representative, with the necessary subcontractors, be talking about schedules, changes, anything of that nature. And that was my biggest concern is that Mandy doesn't have the time availability to be on that project, you know, all the times when the contractors are working and so forth with their own workload. But if we've got an owner's representative that's there, uh, that's been involved in the discussions of the design process, again, alternatives that have been discussed, materials, you know, he's been through all of that things. So where all the discussions of the selections and materials and that sort of thing, such it doesn't get bogged down during the construction process, he has the answers right away. So I I I honestly think April uh that uh doing this with a general contractor and with the city, having a uh owner's representative uh available to be on the job when when necessary, I think is a very good way of going. I would recommend it also.
And I have no real vested interest in one one way or the other. My interest would be hired by the city of Chisholm to address the city of Chisholm's concerns. I don't, I wouldn't end up having a relationship with either party, so.
Um.
Thank you.
Scott, let me ask you a question about April. Did you want to chime in? I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to thank um, thank Mr. Johnson for explaining that again and 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 uh bringing that forward and helping me understand better.
Okay, Scott, I got a question that Tracy might have been on the council during this too, but during Mayor Jugovich's term, they brought forward and passed uh, what's it called, a construction managers agreement or something where like contractors have to hire from our local bench or something that we have in place. What do you know about that?
A lot of times that'll be a project labor agreement.
That's what it is, yes.
Project labor agreement means you're going to use union work. Union workers and they will have to be from that local area if they're available. So you're using masons that are from this area, not the many Twin Cities masons and so forth.
Are you aware that we have? Were you aware that we had that in place?
I don't think you I don't. You would have to may have made a motion in the council to do that.
We we do have that in place and we did have that. I know um. Remember when the mayor of of Hiving even came and talked at one of our council meetings regarding it because he's. A union member of one of his locals or whatever. He's a president. We do have that in place.
Perfect. And that needs to be that needs to be written into the specifications when it goes out on the street for bids by your architect. And we can verify that that's in there.
Good, good. That's why I brought it up because I I thought it needed to be part of this. I mean, counsel, you know, I I would. Five bugles uh reached out to Bill earlier today asking where we're at on everything. Uh I would like to be able to have Bill reply to him tomorrow that we uh, you know, we would like to look at a general contractor type of deal. We'd need a motion, of course, to do that. But I think that's the right way to bid this because then he'll he can work on the paperwork conditionally. And if we're in a position to talk about these other items, we could as well. Unless you want to add this to our working session. Scott, would you be in a position to talk about these uh value engineering items tonight?
I don't have them in front of me, but like we did in the previous meeting, I would agree that most of them I would set up as an alternate. I don't think the added bay is even a consideration. It's. I don't know that I would set that up. I would just. Not I would not accept that one. Because the amount of credit you're going to get is never going to be the same unless you knew that you were never going to want that fourth bay and I. You're never going to get the price for that bay that you can get for it now. So I don't know what's worth. And then the council needs to decide as far as the public. Works building and assault storage, whether or not those want to be taken out of the project. Or if they want to be run as alternates. I think the site work is a no brainer. I'm going by memory on what some of those lists are. The site the site work. Should have been there to start with. We should. It should move over to that location and save you close to. A million dollars by moving it over. And that that doesn't even end up being an alternate. That's just relocation of the site area. And I can't remember the rest of them that were on that list. I don't have in front of me.
So Scott, I have them in front of us. So I think these first four items there. Hall access soils to city site relocate building on site away from digester. Eliminate fourteen thousand two hundred forty five square feet of asphalt due to relocating. Lower building two and a half feet. I mean, those are no brainer.
Those you just do, yeah.
Right? Number five was eliminate training tower. Uh we didn't want to do that, but we thought it might be something we would do as an add all, just so we can see what the cost is.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, I would agree. You're not going to do it because you need that for hose. You need that for your hose drying and everything else, but if you want it as. An alternate, just so you know what a value is.
Okay, uh downsizing the generator was not an option after talking to the chiefs, right?
No.
Uh overhead doors provide fully insulated metal doors and lube glazed. Uh we talked about an add alt on that, I think is.
Yeah, there's no reason not to see what that cost is.
Front and rear.
Run that as an alternate.
Uh I think we're looking at changing them to to blacktop, make aprons in front of the apparatus and. Squad bay heavy duty asphalt and lube concrete.
And you could run that as an alternate. I had concern when I was first met, but they are going to run a full length apron at the outside of the. Thing. So it's at least see what that value is. So run it as an alternate.
The next two, nine and ten were to salt storage in a public works storage building. Uh. We thought that we could bid them as just separate items as part of it. Our separate I think. Fourth apparatus bay, we certainly wanted it bid, but um. What did they say? What did we think that it wouldn't matter? We probably would do it. I mean, if we can afford it, we're doing it because you'd never get it as cheap, but. Would you do it as an adult?
I I probably would. I wouldn't even put a number to it unless you really were going to consider it. It's just some more work that doesn't need to be done because. It sounded like we needed the. Chief said we needed some storage area for other for bolts and everything else that we're going to need that space one way or the other. So unless we were in such of a tight budget that we. Think we're that's the only way that it's going to happen is to get rid of it would be the only reason you'd do that.
Uh Mister Mayor.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Mister Mayor, what what are we doing here? Are we talking about the are we having a working session on the on the public works building or do you want to vote or do you want to make a motion? On the general contractor versus a construction management format? What are we looking for here?
Well. Five bugles can't do anything until we solve all of them. So if you want to just make it a working session, I'm fine. We'll add it to that meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
And I can send a recommendation on if if that works better, a recommendation on those items.
Yeah, why don't we do that, Scott? Like you said, you know more about if there's some benefit to add alts or just including it, you know what? I think we all agree on pretty much everything here. There's so. Um. I think that's all we need tonight, Scott. I was more interested in having you explain the difference between it to we're all added to a working session and decide. Uh next meeting, how we're going to do it.
That'll work. And in the meantime, I'll send a letter related to the alternate slash. Recommendations.
All right, good.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Scott. All right, we'll move on to uh Eileen's second quarter twenty twenty financial report. Separate item, I believe it was in your packet. Good evening, Eileen.
Good evening and welcome to everyone to tonight's second quarter twenty twenty financial reports. I'm sure everyone has been anxiously awaiting for this information and I'm happy. Here to provide you this numerical information. So. Let's get started. Just a couple of comments before we begin. For today's presentation, we are not including general fund revenue. Because our local government aid accounts for approximately sixty percent of our proceeds. Which we receive in the months of July and December. Hence, representing general fund revenue now would not provide a good indication of how our revenues compare to expenses. Also, revenues are not tied to any specific department in the general fund. However, revenues are tied to each of the enterprise funds, water, sewer, refuse. And campground and are recognized when received. Also, the adjusting journal entries for two thousand nineteen have been received from Sterling Company, but have but have not yet been posted. These entries will impact the general ledger balances on January one, two thousand twenty. Due to the reversal of accounts payable accruals that were posted on December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. Once these journal entries are recorded, this will reduce the balance in some general ledger accounts as of January first, twenty twenty. But won't be represented until third quarter twenty twenty financial report. So I'm going to share my screen just so everyone can see. Share the screen. Oh, Bill, can you enable me? Or should we just look at your printouts? I mean, I'm happy to do my printouts too.
We all got printouts, I think, so.
All right, let's let's just do that. All right, so the first page uh shows general fund expenses. As of the end of second quarter, six thirty twenty twenty fifty percent of fiscal year has transpired. So as you see on the far right cor- right column, the percentage used. Uh is represented for each of the departments. So uh you can see there's two. Departments that are performing above that. One is the street lighting department at one oh one point five one percent. And I see that this is due to some LED upgrades and globe streetlights. Uh we made some payments to Hard Electric, Sternberg Lanterns, Wesco Distribution and Independent Electric. Larry, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that or if anybody has any questions regarding that.
I do, Eileen. If you could mention though the savings, where are we at on the utility costs for the accounts? Um I looked at it the other day and I want to highlight the savings, although we're over budget because of the projects we've done. Um we're considerably under budget on utility expense.
Okay.
I think everybody, the council understands all that. We knew we were going over budget to save money, so I don't think we need to get into that.
Okay, yeah, today, just so you know, we've received seven thousand two hundred and twenty six dollars in rebates, so. Thanks for bringing that up, Larry. Also, uh insurance is over budget and that is due to some. Uh adjusting journal entries that we need to do in health insurance. So. That's a representation of some of the comments I made at the beginning. Okay, any other questions about this sheet? I'm ready to go on to the next page. Okay, so let's take a look at enterprise fund revenues and expenses. And again, like I said. Before revenues are represented here under these enterprise funds. And as you can see at the bottom, the new enterprise fund represented is the campground. So in the far right column, we see that water distribution is at eighty three point forty four percent. Um this was due to the um the motor pump for the water plant. And uh some other payments we made to El- Elsner Well, Lake Hood, Lakehead Constructors and Independent Electric. Again, Larry, I don't know if you want to chime in on this.
No, we we reviewed that pretty pretty uh a couple of meetings for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, I think Bill wanted to say something before you got too far past that first base. Did you need to say something, Bill?
I I just wanted to to make a comment, Mister Mayor, and the 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 two items that were discussed, um the street lighting. That it's at a hundred and one percent of budget. Um. But I don't believe, and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, that there will be any more street lighting expenditures. So. Even though we're only halfway through the year, the budget has been spent. So as the year goes on. That percentage each month will come down, and that's the same for the insurance because. I think there was one other insurance bill that was paid, but Eileen's right, there's some adjustments in there. But insurance is normally paid upfront, so the percentage of the budget a lot of times early in the year will be over. Um like the fifty percent of the year through the first quarter, the way we are, it's just of when the money is spent. So it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be, you know, double that over budget at the end of the year. It's just the money has been spent already for the year on on those items.
Okay, uh thank you, Bill. So as you can see, there's uh the debt service at ninety nine percent. That's a one time fee, so. It makes sense and it and it's consistent with what Bill just explained. Um fifty six point thirty five percent for the sewer lift station. I mean, that's pretty close to fifty percent. Interest at a hundred and thirty two point five zero percent. Um our schedule, I took a look at why that is the case, and it just looks like our interest expenses increased. Uh in the month in the year of twenty twenty. Uh that that's the only reason I see that that's transpiring. Uh and if you know and if you notice, there's no percentage used in the campground portion because we are currently working on a budget for twenty twenty. Any questions on this page? Okay, and the last page is the cash balances, and it's really just a visual to serve. Uh you and Aiden, your perspective about our cash wellness and composition. So it just takes a look at the balance as of six thirty twenty twenty, and then it compares it to. The beginning of the year and the change that has transpired. Uh and then it also looks compares it to last year at this time. And how it's changed since last year. And then that pie. That pie diagram just shows the allocation, the representation of each cash account. And the piece of cash pie. Any questions anyone?
Anything for Eileen?
Thank you.
Eileen, very nice visuals, uh very nice layout. I don't know what she uses for program, but you do a good job.
Thank you. It's called Microsoft Excel.
Oh, there you are. The one I don't know how to use. All right, thank you, Eileen. We'll move on. Larry. Resolution number zero eight two zero dash six two, appoint Aaron Dorian as Refuge Collection Heavy Equipment Operator number two.
Uh thanks, everybody. Um we've been, you know, for the last couple of months, moving people in those positions that I talked about. And this is just basically the last move, and then we'll move on to hiring. Um yeah, further down in the packet here just uh so appointing Aaron Dorian to that second refuse operator. Approved approved by the Public Utilities Commission and budgeted for. And he meets the minimum qualification.
Mister Mayor, I'll move resolution zero eight two zero dash six two to appoint uh. Um resolution to appoint the Refuge Collection Heavy Equipment Operator number two.
So second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Fountain. Further discussion. Margaret, take a vote.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good, our motion passes. Next item, job description for heavy equipment operator, truck driver, utility position, Larry.
Hi, everybody. Um again, there um we. I would like your blessing to combine the heavy equipment operator, truck driver position. Um to get a better pool of uh employees. Um the the equipment we have now is just continually evolving and. We're constantly, we're constantly fighting between back and forth, back and forth. Is this your job, my job, that? And uh I apologize, I lost the paper in my packet here for a second. Good. And uh I guess questions, um you know, I've rewritten every job description as they come up. And happy for those questions.
I have a question, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So I understand that somebody wants back pay for this uh job, huh? Is that true?
But there was some rumor about that, Counselor Campbell, and I did my due diligence and talked to Administrator Manny, Attorney Lindsay. I talked to union leadership and that is um frankly just a ridiculous conversation.
That's what I said, but. Everybody else is for this change?
Yep, and I and I honestly have reviewed that with the union leadership on a conference call, and that includes their business representative. And you know, there was absolutely no uh pushback at all. So once we understood it, we all talked about it. Um I think it's going to be a great change.
Okay, with that being said, Mister Mayor, I'll make the recommendation that we go ahead with this uh change in job description.
Okay, so second for that. Counselor Fountain second to Counselor Campbell's motion. Um. Discussion, I'm sure uh Counselor Vaki thinks this is a good idea because he thought the pool was a little small the last time.
Yes, I do. I agree with it. Good job, Larry.
I appreciate that. Yep.
Counsel, any other uh questions? If not, we'll take a vote on the job description.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
I apologize for that.
I am terribly sorry. I am dealing with a light that goes out every five seconds and my frustration's got the better of me.
All right, so that motion passes. Uh Larry, next thing, post internally and externally, uh we'd have to get our. Our hiring committee all together here if we go outside, of course, uh for that uh position we just uh. Approved.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Um. Um really, this is the one that I really, really wanted to get to. This is the meat and potatoes behind it all. Finally getting to this point, we're pushing through the process, and here we are. Um we hope to get these two on. My aggressive goal is to get them on the week before we roll out the um new garbage uh can system in mid October. So. With your support and um. And um your action tonight, we can move forward. The I do want to note that. Basically, the internal posting is a formality. I don't expect any um any signing of. I don't expect any, um, any signing of the posting from an internal candidate. And that was again, also reviewed by the union leadership and the VA. And they agreed that we could post this, uh, simultaneously and, and create that pool. So looking forward to move forward with your support.
So Counsel, we would, uh, if you're in agreement, Larry, you're looking for two employees then, right?
Correct. A minimum of two employees. Um, all of you, most of you are well aware, we have two employees, um, on extended sick leave. So this would help immediately with that. And then this also does create that pool if we were to get in a situation where I think we needed that third, which is budgeted for, by the way, all budgeted. We're not adding people here, we're just replacing. And then we would have that pool established. And I believe the, even the, uh, hiring committee stays on as well through the pool, so.
I still agree. I think we should hire those, uh, two casual labors. I'd like to make a motion for that. Or, no, Margaret, we're not on that?
Step ahead of us.
Oh, sorry. I really, really want those casual labors, I'm telling you.
I appreciate you enthusiasm, April, because I do too, so.
So Larry.
You and Bill on the hiring committee with one counsel person, is that what we normally do?
That's what we have been doing, Mayor.
I'll volunteer.
Anybody else fighting April for that hiring committee?
No, but I have a question.
Go ahead.
Larry, so if we have budgeted for three, why, why aren't we going to hire three?
You mean full-time?
Yeah.
Um, well.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to short-staff you, I'd rather, you know what I mean? I mean, we, we have you guys doing a lot of stuff for us, so if we're budgeting for three, I don't see why we wouldn't.
I'll tell you, while we, we don't have that third, uh, that we don't have that third effect. And I'm really, really hopeful that we don't have these medicals, uh, come back to work and we're all healthy again and then we'll be, we'll be up, we'll be up to speed. We're actually only showing on the budget there, Counselor Vaki, that I'm just too short right now in public works.
So I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify where the two come from is, um, by the end of this year, Bruce Maddick will be retired and that's where this shuffling has been taking place with, with, um, with our employees up till now. Um, there's been Luke Amundson, um, Gage Lustig, and now we have Aaron Doring. That's the progression in filling the spots because of Bruce's retirement. So that opened a spot with the shuffling of the deck, so to speak. And then as part of the new, um, refuge program with bringing on an extra truck, we were at like a, a point six to point eight and then, uh, to go to one point oh, so that that person can also fill in. So that's where the two, the higher two employees is coming from.
Mister Aaron, sir.
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
So we're looking for a motion to post internally and externally. I'll make that motion to post internally and externally for two, two people.
Support.
And to appoint, uh, elect, or the hiring committee of Larry, Bill and Counselor Fountain?
And to appoint the hiring commi- committee of Larry, Bill and Counselor April Fountain.
Okay, good. Is there a second?
Support.
Motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Vaki. Uh, further discussion?
May I have a comment for Larry?
Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Counselor Varda.
Uh, Larry, don't be surprised if you get, uh, more applications from a certain city than you have employees now.
Well, I appreciate that because that means we're doing it right. If nobody wants to come work for me, I don't know if I'd be doing it right, so I appreciate that.
Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good. Our motion passes. Thank you, Larry. I advertise and hire casual labors. Uh, Larry, you'd like to make, uh, he actually used up all his people, although I disagree. I think I used up Tammy's budget for my person at the campground, but we're not talking a lot of money here. If he's looking for two more casual labors to finish out the year, um, I would just say we should do it. Uh, Larry, is that what you're looking for here?
Yeah, correct. Um, you know, with the shortage that we've been dying over, just getting more and more behind. And we had the one employee that came for two weeks and left. He was a pilot, um, and he had to get some hours in out of state, so he left. And then when we added the campground, we lost that one and, uh, and then with the COVID, I would also express that I held those employees home on the rain days, which I think it ended up to be five for almost twenty employees. So I think the budget is a little padded there for at least two, but I think two is manageable. This time of year, we got chipping, you know, sweeping the sidewalk intersection, just all kinds of these little things, including the garbage rollout when we get there in, um, mid-October here, so.
You got our support, Larry. You got our support. We'll make that motion there for you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And then Counselor Campbell seconded that. Uh, so you didn't steal, uh, Tammy's budget with her in play?
No, I don't think so. I think it, uh, well, I, I shouldn't say you'd have that, Eileen, if there was actually, or Administrator Manny, even if there was actually a ledger, um, but I think it is, uh, frankly, just out of the campground budget. So it'll be a wash in the end, but I'm not sure if it actually got transferred budgeted.
All right. I was just kidding. Uh, it, Counsel, anything else on that? If not, we'll take a vote, Margaret.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good. Our motion passes. Larry, last item, addendum to the S C H flow monitoring contract coming out of the P U C.
All right, I saw, um, I, I don't want to drown this out. I don't want to, um, we've been talking about this for a long time. I want to throw those easy numbers back at everybody again, again, because those are the numbers that, that truly matter. When people wonder why our sewer bills are high and sound, and it's because, for example, and these are two numbers, our water plant puts on average three hundred thousand gallons a day. Our sewer is averaged between six and seven hundred thousand dollars, or dollars, in the gallons a day, double, which is in pretty industry standard. We have old infrastructure in that range, just like everybody else does. But we have these times, like we did on that last Friday storm, a week ago Friday, would have been, we hit two point three million gallons within the first couple of hours. And we talk about the sand that gets washed down the lift station. We have major problems somewhere. Um, I'm not an expert in sewer and water. We have this S D H that the council and the Public Utilities Commission has previously approved. We have a serious problem somewhere when we get two point three million gallons of water through our sanitary sewer district in a matter of a couple of hours during a rainstorm, when we're only putting out three hundred thousand through the faucets on that same day. So this is a, I, I believe in the packet, don't quote me exactly that it was, uh, initially, uh, put in the packet wrong. Um, Margaret, were you able to catch that with the adjusted fifty-eight thousand dollar recommendation? I apologize, Margaret.
I believe that's in your memo, Larry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry. I just, I didn't have it in front of me here. So, um, the recommendation from S D H was to do a three sewer shed, um, to try to find that potential big problem and I thought, and it was like forty-three thousand dollars. And I thought, how much is it to do the, uh, the whole city, the whole city, you know? And it ended up being another fourteen thousand, I believe. And, uh, we just got to be one hundred percent sure. We got to be, have all the facts. I just cannot see us going after sixty or seventy percent of the city. We need to find every problem and, and start a plan to fix it. So that is my recommendation to you. I know there's a lot of information in there. I know we've been talking about it for a while. I don't know where else to turn for the two point three million gallons besides the smoke testing that's recommended and by the professionals that they're very, very confident that we can find a smoking gun.
Larry, I have a quick question for you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I ask him a question? Um, Larry, weren't, wasn't the P U C didn't be talking about possibly buying that, uh, pump, sort of pump or, or camera or, or some type of thing to go down into the sewers?
Yep, yep.
And it was like fifteen or sixteen thousand?
I think it was more like seventy thousand, but I think this will help. I think this will even help that argument because our, our, our camera is really, really only good for a hundred feet. Well, when you've got four or five hundred feet between manholes, that doesn't do you any good. So if we do the smoke testing and we find these areas that we can't even go see because we don't have the right camera, then we have to hire a contractor and it just gets timely. So I think that will, I think it'll play into that argument, I really do.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Travis.
Um, if you're ready, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve this for fifty-eight thousand dollars and test the whole city.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion by Vaki, second by Counselor Campbell. Anything else on that? I think this is money well spent. All right, Margaret, take a vote, please.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye, agreed.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good. Our motion passed. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, next item under Vern Resolution Zero Eight Two Zero Dash Six, repair for Justin Rock. It's basically a housekeeping item. Uh, we offer this to our new employees, so, um, looking for a motion to adopt, uh, Resolution Zero Eight Two Zero Dash Six Three.
I'll make that motion for Resolution Number Zero Eight Two Zero Dash Six Three for Justin Rock, employee number ninety.
I'll second that. I met him the other day. He's awesome.
Okay, motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Fountain. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, Margaret, take a vote, please.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fountain.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Uh, next item, brush pile, or that motion passes, sorry, uh, brush pile compo site policy. Uh, we'll let Vern and probably Larry talk a little bit about this.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, as you can see from just, and it's a short proposal, but it's a proposal for, um, um, the brush pile out there, uh, the issues we've been having with it overflowing and, and, uh, with contractors bringing big loads and, uh, thus not having room for our, um, citizens to bring it in. We, we don't want to hurt contractors, but we want to be able to, uh, control it a little better than we have. Um, as you can see, uh, overview tells you about the problems that we've had. And, and like I said, the big problem is once we can't get rid of it, um, and overtaxing, um, Larry's crew, um, what do we do? So this was what, uh, we sat down, Larry and I, Mandy, um, to come up with a policy for, um, handling, uh, contractors out there and try to, um, get a better grip on it. And, uh, basically, you know, this is a policy so we can amend it from time to time, uh, as we need to see fit. Larry, is there anything you wanted to add on that, um, with your guys?
No, I know, I appreciate that. It's just, it gets to be a lot when, especially when we have the big wooden pile that everybody knows isn't supposed to be there, it burns forever. Instead of burning in two hours and be out, we're out there all day. So, no, I, I support this, uh, I think it'll be, uh, a big help, so I appreciate it, chief.
I have a question, Mister Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So how are we going to, how are we going to enforce this? We haven't bought any cameras yet, have we, that we budgeted for in two thousand nineteen? Burned by chance, have we?
We, we're still, uh, moving along with the cameras, Tracy, and one is, the one that's got to go out there is going to be a little bit more expensive just because of the remoteness of it. And I'm not sure if we want to make this, um, uh, that camera priority at this year, at this time. Um, that's something we're still in talks with the camera guy about.
When are we going to get those cameras?
Well, I'm hoping soon. He's been here and, and getting stuff, uh, rolling, so.
Can you put the pressure on him maybe or something? I mean, we, I mean, I'd like to get these cameras up before winter. I mean, would have been nice to have those cameras out there already, you know, and we could have maybe addressed some of these issues. I, I mean, I'm all for this, definitely for these, uh, for this, um, policy. You know, I just don't know how we're going to keep three-inch diameter when I see people dumping big trees out there, you know? So we got to have some way to monitor it and some way to enforce it. Are our guy, are your, are your guys going to enforce it then, if we see violators?
Well, that, that'll be, yeah, between us and the crew, whoever, um, you know, and if the city crew sees someone dumping stuff out there on their way out there, uh, to give us a holler, we'll, we'll be the ones to enforce it. But yeah, that's right now, yeah, it's, it's kind of a hit or miss thing, it's unfortunately.
Okay.
Hey, uh, I have a question, Larry. Think maybe there's something we could do to advertise and people got big stumps like that or big branches, big logs they need to get rid of? We could take that and cut it up and sell it down at the campground.
Right, yeah, exactly. You know, we don't see a lot from the residents and then the ones that we do see, the next guy comes and picks them up. It's the mass amount, uh, and those huge stumps by contractors, because how many residents do you know that can pull their own stumps? I mean, we're talking one in a hundred, so the problem is really more persistent about, uh, the contractors from all around, so. And when chism's a free, uh, a freebie, they come from all over, so it just, uh, makes it worse. But this will help, I think, and I, I hope that I keep all that in mind, so.
Is that, is that going to be enough money, fifty dollars for a yearly fee? I mean, is that going to help us in our overtime that we're going to have to, you know, use up to monitor this or to, um, take care of these? So fifty bucks is going to be enough?
That was a hard one, Tracy, because I think of the contractors I use it once or, or twice, but then, uh, and you know, there's contractors that use it a hundred and fifty times a year, so I, I don't know. I didn't know how to do that. What I like better is the two hundred and fifty dollar fine if they violate. I feel like that's finally a fine that I've heard a number of that would probably hurt them a little bit, make them think twice.
Okay, thank you.
So have we thought about, uh, have we come up with a permit? I mean, and who's going to handle the permitting? How, how does a person get a permit if they're a contractor?
Oh, sorry about that, Mayor. Yeah, Mandy, um, thankfully, Mandy, uh, jumped right in and said she would be happy to help. She was gonna, and do it just like she does the landlords, I believe. Is that right, Mandy?
Yep. So what I can do, oh no, my, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, my computer's all funny. Weird. Okay, you can't, you guys can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, what I will do is I'll collect the fee. Um, what I do need to talk to Eileen about is what, um, what we want to code it as actually. But what I will do is just, um, put them into all my permits. Um, almost just like a, Larry's right, like a rental licensing fee because it's going to be yearly. Um, and we can track it that way. I'm happy to do that. I just need to make another code with Eileen so we know where to put the revenue.
And what do they call your line at City Hall?
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-nine one, or do you want to just?
Seventy-nine oh six.
Seventy-nine oh six, two five four seven six. Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mandy.
Okay, yep.
Uh, this, Brian Vern, what, so this two hundred and fifty dollars, is this a tab charge? We keep the whole thing or what? How is this all working? Is this a, I mean, are you able to actually collect this, Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. And there will be, uh, we will need to build a little bit into our ordinances to allow us to collect this, but we could essentially make it an admin fee that would be a fee to the city.
All right. So as part of this proposed plan, when we approve it, we're going to direct you to do whatever you need to do to make this work, right?
Uh, absolutely, and what I'll, what you'll probably see is, uh, within the next meeting or two, you'll see me coming forward with a proposed, either some additional language for an ordinance or some changes to, to, uh, one of our ordinances. I'm scanning now just to see where, uh, where this may fit in more naturally.
Okay, so, um, Counsel, we need a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, compo site policy and direct, uh, also direct, uh, the, uh, the language to Attorney Lindsay to bring us back, uh, if we need an ordinance change for this two hundred and fifty dollar fine. That made any sense?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, policy and to change the language or verbiage if we need to in any of our ordinances.
Okay, motion by Counselor Lance, second for that.
Support, Counselor Varda.
Heard by Counselor Varda. Any other discussion on that item?
Mister Mayor, I have a question for Vern or more of a statement.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Vern, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Uh, earlier today, I spoke to Larry Fullstad about the situation in an unnamed town that I came upon this morning. My first job, there was things written in white paint in the middle of the road that start with the letter F. Big and white. And I was told by a lady that watched him that was get getting her baseball bat to go outside at one o'clock in the morning, but they were gone by the time she got there. Is there any of that kind of stuff going on around here that you're aware of or because? You know, I don't want to see that in arts, on our streets.
Well, you know, we've had vandalism uh with paint and and other things in the past, but lately, nothing um nothing's sticking out, nothing, it's it's worse than other towns. We haven't really had any of that, and knock on wood, for for quite a while. So it's been good for a while.
I did tell the the Elgin lady, call nine one one next time.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be probably a better idea.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Have a motion in support to uh pervert the brush policy, brush pile policy and direct uh the verbiage to Attorney Lindsay for any feedback. Um Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Next item, gambling permit, St. Joseph's Catholic Church raffle. Uh date of raffle, October twenty of twenty twenty, uh motion to accept a gambling permit.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor, seconded by Counselor Lance, I believe. Uh further discussion. Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Uh last item under Vern, I asked Vern to give us a report on Buell, kinda how we're doing. How we're doing, even money wise and time spent. So Vern, go ahead, I'll let you talk.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to keep this somewhat short since I know we have a lot more on the agenda, but as you know, the the police department has been providing police coverage to Buell since the first of the year, and I have to admit, I was very surprised at how smooth it's gone so far. The citizens and staff over there uh have been very receptive. In fact, since we started enforcing enforcing ordinances, which hadn't been done for a while, uh there have very, been very few complaints, and I I really expected more. Um the administrator and the mayor have been nothing but complimentary about the services and and the way it's going so far. Our officers seem to like spreading their wings and and driving over there. I don't hear any complaints about having to go over there. The call load has been handled easily thus far. The officers have been able to prioritize calls and utilize the resources without any hiccups. We average about four and a half hours a day there uh patrolling in Buell and at at an average of what they pay us, it's about fifty two dollars an hour that that they're paying for. Uh we do take in a little bit of revenue there. We have taken in uh eighteen hundred and fifty five dollars in parking fines with another twenty eight parking unpaid uh tickets, which right now, because they're unpaid, they've gone up to the maximum. So there was a potential of sixteen hundred and eighty dollars uh or a total of thirty five hundred and thirty five dollars for parking that we uh potentially can take in this year. Um parking was really a a strange thing. We hit it uh in January. We had a ton of tickets by the end of, because they don't do parking um only in the winter. By the last month, there was like three tickets for the whole month. They were with them in the shape, kind of, you know, they they caught on. Uh we have a six blank citations uh written out there, uh maximum uh four hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. So total right now is on the books that we collect is thirty nine hundred and eighty five dollars, so just under four thousand dollars. We've written a handful of of court citations, but the fine money for those uh doesn't trickle in for a while pending their convictions. Um I would estimate between five and eight hundred dollars in fines, uh maybe by the end of the year for that stuff. But you have to remember, we're not a revenue generated based service. We're not, our job isn't just to collect revenues. Um this is strange here with the COVID. There has been a ton of meetings for me to go over, but all the feedback I've received from an administrative pervenancy and mayor search is that it's been a positive partnership and they're hoping to continue it. Now, that's my opinion, uh you know, and I could be a little biased, uh but please feel free to reach out to them and and talk to them or their counsel. I I believe you'll be hearing the same thing. And and I want to stress again that they're looking for ways to pair and share more with our city, and I think this is a great catalyst for uh for this to begin. So this year, we're running a little under budget due to the COVID. Um so covering Buell hasn't really impacted us or or been a burden. My recommendation for the budget for twenty twenty, just because of inflation, and we should look at maybe a three to four percent increase. This gives us a little bit extra money and and it also gives us time to see how next year will go and keep it reasonable for them and hopefully foster continued sharing of other services with our city. Of course, all of that is is done through the council representation because it's a contract, but that would be my recommendation if we're gonna do any increase. Keep it small and and get a a joint meeting with them as soon as possible so we can start talking about wh- how other benefits we can do between our two cities.
Counselor comments on it? So Vern. Um so, I mean, I'm comfortable with you telling him that you you think we should do a three to four percent. I don't know how the council feels about that. I I think since you you don't feel like we overextended here, that I I'm okay with that. Obviously, we had a lot of questions about where this number was last year. I think we can, we're comfortable, it's i- i- it went okay. Um you know, I mean, they're probably waiting for a number for their budget right now. I don't, Counselor, how do you feel about a three to four percent increase? I mean, I don't see a real need for a meeting if everybody's happy here and and they come back and say they'd like to continue another year and they're okay with the three to four, I'm certainly.
I'm, I'm good with three to four percent, uh Mr. Mayor. I don't see the need to meet as long as we all agree with that.
I don't have a, I don't have any issue with it. Um would the contract then stay the same so that tickets and stuff would still come back to chism? Not that it's a lot, but it's something too.
Yeah, I think Vern's recommendation is based on all that.
Uh right, Mr. Mayor, and I, that that is a question for Brian. I I, you know, because it's a contract, uh usually it's between council to council, but I I think the contract was written um without having to renegotiate the contract just to up the up the yearly fee. Um I I guess I'd have to look into that quickly. Um I I think the other part of that, though, stressing a meeting with them isn't just about this contract, it's what else we could do to pair and share things, especially if we're looking at budgeting this year. If we're looking at budgeting a piece of equipment that there they are as well, uh that we could share or, you know, go halvesies and.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, didn't we have a, didn't we have a committee that we can use for that? I mean, can you, didn't we have a committee that we set up initially to um it was you and Bill and Vern, I believe? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I, you know, I, we talked about police fire, everything. Larry was there, they came over. So I might be happy to sit down in that. I know Larry is in a POC or or, I mean, we're doing stuff with garbage already there and I mean, he'd like to look at doing more. So I mean, if you wanna, if you want, I'd be more than happy. We'll try to get a meeting with Buell again. Um.
Yeah, I don't think we all need, I don't think we all need to be there. I mean, that's up to the council, I guess. I'm just picking my own sense on that, but I don't see why the committee can't handle that.
Yeah, like I said, it would be probably myself, Bill, Vern, Larry. Anybody else we feel needs is needed.
Need a motion on that or just wanna go ahead and do it?
Or direct us to go and and bring back the the new contract and anything else we might.
I'll, I'll make a motion then to recommend that you guys go to the approach Buell with uh the recommendation of a three to four percent increase and then talk about other services that we may provide for them. And bring it back to the council for a vote.
All right, is there a second for that?
Support.
Support by Counselor Lance. Further discussion? Margaret, take a vote, please.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, good, that motion passes. Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Bill, just make sure you note to one of you that we have to try to set something up with them, so I'm gonna forget. All right, uh Tammy, accept bids and word contract for skating rink building.
Yes, I just have one correction on my memo. I was four hundred and ninety six dollars and twelve cents off. Um so the total funds so far for the foundation work is twenty five thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars and eighty three cents. And I am recommending the low bid from Bugalis um for thirty three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. The one nice thing are they're the company that installed the brick and concrete work for the project, so they're familiar. Um I am a bit over budget. I apologize for that, but we were gonna have the school initially build this building. There are funds in my summer rec program if the council wants to eventually amend the budget that could help cover the overruns on this project.
Tammy, Tammy, what was the foundation work total?
The total? Twenty five, oh, the to, oh, I didn't.
For the foundation work.
The remaining funds would be twenty five thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars and eighty three cents. So, and it was about five hundred dollars, four dollars off, five hundred dollars um off that twenty six thousand four hundred.
So what's your overage then, gonna be honest? Um, are you projecting?
Well, let's see, thirty three, twenty five, seven, and about three thousand, probably about ten thousand dollars.
How much you got in your record budget you don't think you'll be using?
I have at least twenty thousand dollars just in summer rec um employed in wages.
I think we should use that money myself.
Yeah, I thought it was a good fit.
Yeah, I think we should accept this bid from Bugalis for thirty three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and allow our uh book people are to uh move the funds out of the record budget to cover it.
Yep.
Make a motion, Tracy.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, exactly what you just said.
Support.
Heard by Counselor Baki, motion made by Counselor Campbell. Uh discussion on that item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like for uh Eileen or and or Bill to look for this extra ten grand so Tam doesn't have to use her small budget to try to cover this.
Well, she's not gonna use it in.
I won't be using those funds anyhow because we did not have summer rec this year.
Tammy, you're awful dark. I can barely see you.
I know, but my other light makes a glare and I can't see.
Well, as long as she doesn't swear. All right, we have motion support. Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. That motion passes. Jim Johnson, Resolution zero eight two zero dash six four municipal state aid street fund advance.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh through the gas tax and being a municipal state aid city, uh we are allocated and this year and then over the last few years, that amount has been about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. Twenty five percent of that uh money or about eighty thousand comes to the city directly for street maintenance uh that Bill incorporates into our uh street maintenance budget, and that's paid out uh several times of the year. But uh seventy five percent or about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, it goes into our construction account uh to finance basically uh our streets, our municipal state aid streets, the storm sewer and restoration, which typically on our infrastructure projects make up about sixty to seventy percent of the total cost. Um what this resolution is doing is allowing us to borrow forward, and we're allowed to uh get this advance to borrow up to about five times our annual allocation. So we can uh get, really, it's a uh an interest-free loan uh for up to five years or about one point two million dollars. And then that just gets repaid off out of that annual allocation. Uh in doing so, uh we've been able to uh upgrade a number of our infrastructure projects and including uh in in this advance, we can get uh reimbursement for them, our our eighth street project, our thirteenth street project, and our Fourth Avenue Mill and overlay. So this is just a resolution that we have to submit uh uh requesting the advance of that money or that interest-free loan, interest-free loan, excuse me. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would recommend adoption of this resolution eight twenty dash sixty four, and to be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great job, uh uh Jim. You, this is wonderful. Um I I'll definitely uh make a motion to adopt Resolution number zero eight two zero dash six four. Excellent.
Okay, Counselor Fulton made the motions or second for that?
I'll second that.
Counselor Campbell seconded. Uh Jim, just a question. I I mean, how far into the future are we, are we at this point? Are, I mean, are you concerned we're?
Five years, but uh basically, we've got our state aid system in very good uh shape, and I don't uh anticipate needing to use it for at least a couple of years right now.
Okay, good.
The other thing that it actually, the advance actually helps us draw more needs, which gives us more money. Those cities that aren't spending their construction funds uh get penalized, and their penalty is added on to the revenues that those cities that are uh spending the money uh get additional money, so. And it's interest-free, so we're spending with today's dollars and repaying with dollars down the road.
Perfect. Um okay, Counselor, anything else? No, we'll take a vote.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Uh SEH fee amendment for Third Street Northwest Project, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um it's covered uh in my cover letter on fifty seven and then enumerated what those uh revisions were uh on pages fifty eight and fifty nine. Um basically, updating the feasibility report initially, we were looking at the three alternatives, and then we uh moved to that fourth alternative, which is the one that uh we actually have selected and have bid. Uh we asked them to prepare also the temporary construction easements where we're gonna be crossing private properties where utilities existed, but there were never easements acquired in the past. Uh the design and plan modifications uh are basically a follow-up to the feasibility, revising the plans to incorporate um alternative number four. And then initially, uh I was gonna have the project stop at the west leg of the intersection of Third Street and Fourth Avenue. Um but uh it didn't make any sense to put in brand-new sidewalk and not put in the pedestrian handicap ramps on the west leg of that intersection, uh so that got um incorporated into the plans as well. Um and actually, in that note, um twelve people, our twelve residences out there have responded to the sidewalk survey so far. And today, uh to date, uh it's unanimously unanimously for or yes for the reinstallation of sidewalks. But anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would recommend approval uh of this fee amendment request in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars uh which is on an hourly cost basis, so it's based on actual hours worked or put on that, but a maximum cost of the ten thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make that motion to uh approve the cost not to exceed ten thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And just a note, I'm always for sidewalks. I believe we need sidewalks in town. I don't think it should be an option to vote on them.
Amen, second.
Much by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Fulton. Further discussion? Margaret, take a vote.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Baki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, motion passes. Resolution zero eight two zero dash six five, accept bids and word contract for Third Street Northwest Infrastructure Replacement Project, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, if you'll turn to page sixty six in your uh agenda. agenda, is the resolution oh eight twenty dash sixty-five. What I want to point out quickly is that we actually received seven bids and you'll see that they're very competitive bids. I don't remember when was the last time that we had seven bids on a project, maybe the Lakeview addition, but very seldom do we get more than about three or four bids on the project. As you see, it came in significantly higher than what we were talking about at the time of the feasibility study. I have talked with Masabi Bytuminus and they are actually their subcontractors, Bugalis and Sons out of Hibbing. And they are really not planning to start to do any work yet this year. They may do some clearing and grubbing up in that Fourth Street along the alley type of area, but all utility construction sounds like it will be postponed till next spring. And with the significant increase in price mainly because of bedrock and so forth, I suggested to Bill that this is not only this year's infrastructure improvement project, but the budgeting for next year would hopefully take care of the balance of the cost of this project, so it's really a twenty-twenty and a twenty-twenty-one project, but I think we, as you see, we got very competitive bids, low bid actually left about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the table. With that, I would recommend acceptance of the bid of Masabi Bytuminus in the amount of sixteen hundred twenty-four dollars, excuse me, one million six hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty dollars and ninety-five cents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you two might have.
Jim, I have a question, but it's probably more for Bill or Eileen. If we accept his bid, that's basically three hundred thousand over budget. Does it truly come out of next year because we're paying an extra, or did it just still hold it against this year because the bid was accepted this year? When the auditors show up?
No, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would need to ask the auditors that question. I don't know the answer to that. In the, in the public sector, I do not know.
Okay.
That is, Brian, do you happen to know?
I don't know the answer to that question without looking deeper into it.
Counsel, I don't want to hold up this project because it is, the truth of the matter is, we can afford to do it and that's one of the most important projects in town right now with that collapsed line, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move resolution number zero eight two zero dash six five for Masabi Bytuminus.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Support.
Heard by Counsel Lance, further discussion. Take a vote, please.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vocke.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Motion passes. Partial app number four for Thirteenth Street, Fifth Avenue Northwest Project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On page sixty-seven is my request for council action as and this particular pay estimate that we go, you can go through it in detail in the attachments that are found attached to this as well. But basically, what we're paying for is the installation of the Bytuminus wearing course surface, two large drainage structures that were actually done, constructed last year, and some sodding, there's still some seeding and sodding that will be coming forward within the next month on this. But if you look on page sixty-nine then, is the pay application. You see, the work completed to date is about eight hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents, which is well below the original contract amount by about fifty thousand dollars. There's, so I think we'll probably end up, probably right in the neighborhood of about eight hundred thirty, eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars total cost on the project. But anyway, we are withholding retainage of forty-one, five percent to forty-one thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. We've done previous payments of just under six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so the amount due that I would recommend a payment for is in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, we're looking for a motion to accept a pay request for ninety-seven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Make that motion for pay application number four.
Is there a second for that? Everybody's really quiet tonight.
Support.
There he is. Further discussion. Okay, a motion by Counsel Fulton, seconded by Counsel Lance. Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vocke.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Jim JPJ, engineering change order number two for the Southeast Chisholm water main loop project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On page seventy-five, you find the change order and there's three items there. And there's detailed invoices behind that to provide again that detail. As you see, the first item deals with an eighteen-inch water or extension on the hydrant. If you notice, south of the lift station, there's a hydrant pretty well up the hill and the water main is much lower down the hill and so forth and you can't put that lead pipe going from the main up to the hydrant at an angle, otherwise the hydrant comes out of the ground at an angle as well, so this is an eighteen-inch extension. The second one, where we tied into on, up on Lake Street, all the records I had showed that that was an eight inch. When they actually dug into it, they found that it was a ten inch, so they had to backfill and get the necessary connection parts. And then the third item was a storm sewer outlet that was not on the plans as well, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but would recommend approval of this change order number two in the amount of ten thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Change order number one dealt with when we relocated the water main out to the right-of-way of County Road sixty-seven to accommodate the relocation of the Public Safety Building. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend approval of change order number two.
Counsel, questions for Jim?
I'll recommend change order number two, the one of ten thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Is there a second for that?
Support, Counsel Varda.
Counsel Varda seconded. Jim, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, this came up during the project. It had to be done, obviously, there, when they get to it, they gotta do it. Is there some way we can think of, you know, the word change order is an evil word to council people to start with? You know.
Didn't it do the contract?
I mean, we're approving something that's already been done and I know that doesn't always sit real well with council people. Is there any way that we, I don't know how we could do this, but I think the council would at least like to know this stuff before they have to approve it after the fact, I don't know. Or does the council feel that we just rely on our engineer to have to make these in-motion decisions and we just have to do this? I don't know.
It's partly why we have a construction observer on the project from one of these firms, so they are documenting the hours and we typically have the hourly rates and we get invoices on the materials and so forth, so we try to cover, so we're, and then by MINDOT spec, they're allowed about a fifteen percent profit margin on the materials portion of it, not the labor portion of it, so we do try to document it or, you know, track it and, and make sure that it's legitimate, it's that we're not being gouged.
Okay. And I, I've been around long enough to know that it's part of doing projects, I just, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. The word change orders is always set the interest only with. All right. Counsel, anything else? If not, we'll take a vote.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Last item under Jim TNT Aggregates LLC, partial pay application number two for the Southeast Chisholm Water Main Loop Project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry. This is it's covered on eighty-two on the request for council action, primarily paying for the extra work that we just approved on the change order number two as well as the Bytuminus pavement replacement. As noted, there are a couple punch list items left to do, complete out there, primarily dealing with drainage and the seeding, taking root and so forth, so hopefully within the next month, we'll get the final pay application coming through on page eighty-four then, again, going through that same scenario. The work completed to date is just under four hundred nineteen thousand one hundred dollars. We're retaining retainage, five percent retainage, I should say, of twenty thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Less previous payments, the amount due that I would recommend approval of is sixteen thousand five hundred two dollars and thirty-four cents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Looking for a motion to pay that partial pay application number two for TNT aggregates in the amount Jim mentioned.
I'll make the motion, Counsel Varda.
Counsel Varda making motion, second for that.
Support.
Counsel Lance, discussion.
I just want to make a comment if I can, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So I guess I didn't speak up on the last one, but I'll speak up on this one, so I, I have a problem with change orders, I will not lie about that. And when we award a contract for three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars and then there's twenty, twenty-two thousand or more in change orders, that screws up our budgeting, in my opinion, and so I don't like change orders. Sometimes I feel like just because they run into a small snag, now we're always having to pay for it and I just don't like that, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Travis, if I might respond, that's why I brought it up when we were talking, talking about the change order on the Southeast Chisholm water main loop, the number one change order was the relocation of that water main rather than taking it east-west across the front of where the Public Safety Building was originally going to be going. We did change order number one to relocate that entire water main along the west right-of-way line, west right-of-way line of County Road sixty-seven and that enables us to, you know, relocate the Public Safety Building and save, you know, that million dollars that we're talking about, so some of these things, you know, things changed and I, I understand, I don't like change orders other, as well, but we find a lot of surprises that information we didn't know and that's usually what's involved in those. Thank you.
All right, we need to take a vote on that, Margaret.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Margaret, could you note for the agenda, Counselor Fulton sent me a message she had to leave to get ready for work, she left at seven fifty?
No bid.
Thank you.
Counsel Vocke.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Jim. Jim Varda, Counsel Varda, twenty twenty-one stipend for Fire Department, page eighty-seven.
Yes, I hope you guys all had a chance to go over their job descriptions over the last week or two. You can times that by ten with what they're doing on top of that job description. This is something I believe should have been installed fifty years ago, but it hasn't been. And all these people, the assistant chief, captains, attendants, safety officers, the chief can even talk about a little bit, or Counsel Lance, they go way above and beyond the job, job descriptions and they deserve to get paid for what they're doing above and beyond, in my opinion. So I would like to make the motion to accept this. And for Eileen, it comes off to be a thousand dollars a month, but the assistant chief already gets paid one fifty, so it's only eight hundred fifty dollars a month. And our budget can easily handle it.
I'll support that.
Motion made by Counsel Varda for the stipend and seconded by Counsel Campbell. And I agree they deserve it as well. Counsel, any other question?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say absolutely they deserve it, you know, they are responsible for people's lives. Brian, is it okay that we vote on this? Or, you know, I'm a member of the Fire Department, I'm obviously not an officer, I have no intention of becoming anyone soon, but are we okay?
So long as you're not an officer and so long as you're not intending to, in the, in the immediate future, become an officer, you have to avoid the vote and recuse yourself if you have any direct financial interest in the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mark, we can all vote on that, so go ahead when you're ready.
Mayor Champa, if I may?
Yes.
Is this for two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah.
Yes, just start January first, yeah.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton. Absent. Counsel Vocke.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Motion passes. Margaret, do you have a list in front of you that you look at? You always look like you got a list in front of you there. Remember the order. I wouldn't blame you if you did, it's, it's confusing some days. Next item, resolution zero eight two zero dash six six, appoint counsel liaison for the Fire Department. So we have our letter from Counsel Varda that he's retiring. But how come you don't want to be the liaison anymore, Jim?
I just don't. I think it'd be better served by somebody else.
So this would just be for the remainder of this year and we'll do the reappointment again this year?
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I would, I would like to have Counsel Lance replace me since he's on the Fire Department and I, I believe the Fire Department would like to keep it as long as there's a council member as a firefighter. Because we've, over my ten years, we've had a couple council liaisons that wouldn't even, would refuse to bring Fire Department stuff to the city council before they'd even leave the meeting, so I would like to have Adam Lance replace me.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move resolution zero eight two zero dash six six, appoint Counsel Lance to the Fire Department liaison.
Till the end of the year?
I'll second it, yes.
Yes, till the end of the year.
Adam, do you, do you accept that position? Awful quiet.
Adam, you're on mute.
Sorry, because of reasons everybody's seen earlier, I keep it on there longer. No, I would absolutely take that position. I wish Jim would stay on longer for the year, but if that's his choice not to, I would respect that, but I definitely want to say how much of a pleasure it's been working with you on the Fire Department, Jim. You're a joy to be around, you're a hell of a guy, you know, so we hate to see you leave. I wish you'd.
I applaud that. Thank you very much, Jim, for all you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree, Jim. Good job with the retirement coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, for everything you do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Margaret, when you're ready, we'll take a vote to appoint Adam the counsel liaison for the rest of the year.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton. Absent. Counsel Vocke.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Travis, Chamber Cash Initiative, we heard about earlier.
Okay, so you heard from Shannon, I don't need to regurgitate everything that she said. She's looking for us to cover and I supported this at the EDA for it to come to the city because it is not specific to chamber members, it is open to all Chisholm businesses. I think that it should come from us. Lucky for us, it is also covered under COVID, so I don't think it's, I don't think we need to talk more about it. If there's no other chat, then I would make the motion to approve that we pay seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars toward the chamber cash, uh, proposal.
I support.
Motion by Counsel Vaki, supported by Counsel Lance. Discussion? I just, I like the, uh, I like the, uh, things coming out about the EDA and the chamber. I think, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a lot of good things here, so. Um, it's good to keep it up. This is, this is an ugly, unprecedented time if you're trying to run a business right now, I can tell you that, so. Counsel, if there's anything else, uh, we'll take a vote on that. Margaret?
Counsel Lance.
Hi.
Counsel Fulton, absent. Counsel Vaki.
Hi.
Counsel Varda.
Hi.
Counsel Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Can a motion pass this? Travis, schedule a working session with this discovery center?
Yeah, so I, uh, I've, uh, everyone on the council got a little information, um, from me earlier today. Um, so I don't want to, um, speak too much about it, except Jordan requested a meeting with us. I believe that Donna is also going to be there, and, um, one other, uh, gentleman is going to join in on that. Uh, they would like to have a working session with us to talk about the Redhead Bike Trail and partnerships moving forward. Um, I know that Wednesday, September second works well for them. I don't know if that works well for everyone here, so I guess that's, um, what we need to decide then.
Travis, the reason we threw out some other dates is because, uh, Bill might have a conflict. I don't know if he does or not. It sounded like, uh, it did. Bill, did you ever hear back from Jordan?
I did not, Mayor. I'd send, I called him and sent him an email. I did not hear back from him.
Whatever we decide, I can follow up with him, too.
But if it needs to be the second, then that, that's fine. I'll just, I'll move what I have, if that works for everybody.
Bill, and maybe we don't need you there either. We can, we can work on it. So, um, so we're looking for a working session to meet with the redhead. Uh, you know, I'd like to have our, uh, COVID meeting, following it, and our, uh, public safety building, following it. So we would have, we would, uh, run the Zoom meeting from Chisholm. Travis, is a Zoom meeting okay? Is that what they had in mind?
Yes, yes, yep, yep, that's what it would be.
So I'd look for a motion then to hold that meeting on, what's the second, at five thirty?
That works for me.
Counsel?
That works.
I don't know about Trace.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good. I might not be there, but I'm good. No, I'll be there.
Hey, so I'll, um, uh, Jim, does that work for you, too?
Sure.
So then I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for a special meeting then on September second at five thirty.
Working session.
Working session, sorry, working session.
I, I thought it was at five. Five P M.
Either, either way, it works for me.
No, the earlier the better, because it's gonna be a long meeting as it is, so five works for me.
Okay, I'll amend mine to five o'clock.
Working session on the second, okay?
Five o'clock.
And, uh, who seconded that, Adam?
No, Counsel Varda did. I did.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could we just clarify then the three items that'll be on the agenda for that working session will be?
Our working session with the discovery center, talk about the Redhead Mountain Bike Park and, uh, joint ventures going forward. The, uh, the CARES money funding and how we might spend that before November, and the, uh, public safety building. We're gonna, uh, give Five Bugles direction on how we want to project bid and finalize these value engineering items. Uh, most likely Officer Scott's, to solve his recommendation, he's gonna forward to us.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, being it's a working session, any action or no action can be taken. The action will come back to the September ninth council meeting.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, please.
Okay. Counsel, uh, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, Margaret, take a vote to, uh, hold that working session.
Counsel Lance.
Hi.
Counsel Fulton, absent. Counsel Vaki.
Hi.
Counsel Varda.
Hi.
Counsel Campbell.
Uh, just to clarify, that's at five o'clock, correct?
Correct.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, COVID nineteen planned for the arena, pretty straightforward. The attorney and Bill reviewed these. Um, recommend that we approve the COVID nineteen plan for the arena.
I'll make that motion.
Second for that?
Support.
Motion by Counsel Vaki, seconded by Counsel Lance. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have something to say about that.
Go ahead.
Uh, has anybody that's had a child and skated, they know how expensive it is? Or a grandchild? Uh, I don't see any reason why with this plan, it's a good, I like the plan, but why both parents can't go if they want to? Or two family members?
I think they're trying to limit the number of people in the building. Yeah, that program has over, like the Chisholm Skating Club has a hundred some kids in it, so it ends up being.
Yeah, but they all skate at different times, right? I mean, the group only twenty-five is something skate at once.
Yeah. I can tell you, you know, because I have a granddaughter that skates that it's usually one of the parents that gets them there. It's hard enough finding somebody to go to start with, so I don't know how.
Oh, I know. I just, it just seemed to be more, more, uh, adult, uh, supervision there, is all I'm curious about.
Yeah. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just have another point of clarification that this exhibit that's in your packet is just part, they still have to follow the city's master plan as amended recently, um, due to governor's, I believe it's Brian Executive Order is at eighty-one, the face mask requirement. That our city master plan was amended, so this, they have, in addition to following our amended city COVID master plan, they also have to follow, this exhibit was pertained specifically to the arena.
You're correct, Bill, twenty-eighty-one.
Thank you.
Margaret, you take a vote on that, please.
Counsel Lance.
Hi.
Counsel Fulton, absent. Counsel Vaki.
Hi.
Counsel Varda.
Hi.
Counsel Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, bill election process overview and absentee ballots.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, in, in essence of time and call centers, I'm gonna go through this brief, but it is actually simple and straightforward. Um, the goal here is to try to get as many people to register for absentee, early voting, mail-in voting, whatever you want to call it. Um, um, that we can, because dominate the people in the arena, uh, the safety of the workers, the safety of the public. Um, so that is the goal, um, with this. Um, absentee ballot, absentee voting, mail-in voting begins Friday, September eighteenth. The general election is Tuesday, November third. So the stories that you hear on the news about the mail not getting their ballots, not getting in on time, should not be an issue for the citizens of Chisholm that want to vote early, because if you get your information early, you basically have six weeks to vote. Um, so non-issue here, other states, other areas have different, um, different laws and procedures. Um, so I'm just gonna be brief on the absentee, uh, voting. So the first thing you need to do is obtain an absentee ballot application. And if I hold this up, I don't know how close, how good you can see this. But it's, it's a pretty simple form. You, you go to Minnesotavotes.org or you call our office at two five four seven nine zero three. I'm gonna repeat that. You go to Minnesotavotes.org or you can go call the city hall at two five four seven nine zero three. You get this application, one-sided. There's seven things that you have to fill out. The first one is pretty simple. If, if you haven't requested abs, absentee ballot for the primary and general election, you just check the general election, November third. That's number one. Number two is your name. Number three is your date of birth, the county where you live, and your phone number. Number four is you check if you have a driver's license and a social security number. If you don't have a socials or a driver's license, that you have a Minnesota-issued ID card. Number five is the address where you live. Number six is the address where you want your absentee ballot sent. And number seven, you sign and date that you're certified to vote. This form, this application can literally be filled out in three, I'd say, two to four minutes is what it takes to fill that out. So, um, once you fill this out and, uh, we get notified, everything runs through the county, uh, online, then you get in the mail a packet. And that packet includes instructions. There's basically a page on instructions on how to vote absentee. Your ballot comes in the packet. There is what's called a ballot envelope, and you can see that there's, your name is not on there. This is called a secrecy ballot. When you vote, because one of the issues people have, they think that we, or people sit at city hall, open these absentee ballots and see how Bill Manning votes. That's not what happens. Um, your ballot goes into this, when you vote, it goes into this secrecy envelope that doesn't have your name or any identification on it. The ballot, that ballot goes into this envelope, which we have to verify. And what's on this envelope is your name, your address, and on your application, if you put your driver's license, it's your driver's license number. Or if you put your social security, it's the last four of your social security number. You sign it. And then, um, you get a witness to witness that it's your signature. Now, in the primary, the witness part of it was waived because of COVID. I do not know if that's gonna be the case in the general election. So what happens is you take the secrecy ballot that I showed before, the secrecy, excuse me, the secrecy envelope with your ballot sealed inside, that goes inside of this envelope, okay? That then, um, goes into then an, another envelope that gets mailed back to us with postage already on there. So the postage is paid for you. So when we open these up, we have to record where you sign your name. This goes in to a secure container where we do not open these, we record them, but we do not open them until the night before the election. When we open these, we set these aside, we take the secrecy ballot, the, the envelope that contains your ballot, and we put it off to the side in a big pile. We literally have hundreds of these. So when we start opening these, we have no idea who voted for whom. The ballots then get put in a secure location until election day. And at the end of the night, after polling is closed, after the voting machine is cleared out of the people that have voted on election night, and all those ballots are taken aside, we have to insert a separate chip into the voting machine that ultimately gets delivered to the county that night. Um, and then we have to manually run all the absentee ballots through the vote counting machine, so those votes are tabulated. So at the end of the night, we have a tape from the machine of the people that voted in person, a tape of the people that voted absentee. Those have to be brought, the nearest location is Hibbing City Hall the night of election. Those have to go to county, the county, there's representatives of the county auditor's officer, and they verify that. So it is totally secret. Uh, it's totally safe, it's totally secure. With that, I'll entertain any questions, but I'll probably be bringing this back again once or twice before the election, even considering using COVID money because of the health and safety of running some ads in the paper, doing a Facebook media, whatever media blitz we can to try to explain to people how simple and straightforward it is to vote absentee or vote mail-in or vote early, whatever you want to call it. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Bill, just one, one, one item there, and that's, uh, after you fill out your application requesting a ballot, an absentee ballot, uh, how do they get it to us back so that they can get a ballot? Call city hall and say, hey, I got it. I'll be outside. Can you bring me my packet? Or what do we do?
No, it, it, basically, the, um, this then, I mean, if it, it goes to the county, they record it and they send us, we, we got a report um, from the county. They can also, um, bring these here and, and, you know, we can process them. Um, but it, it's, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
So it's typically handed to the county then?
Well, if you do it online, um, okay, you can, you can return it to your local election office. Well, it can be brought here. Um, or if you go online, it tells you where to bring it. But if there's any qui, I mean, it can be, it can be brought here. Um, so you just have to call the number two five four seven nine zero three.
Is doing it online, doing the whole thing online and submitting online an option?
No, it's mayor, no, it's not. The only thing you do online is fill out the application, the seven questions that I mentioned.
But I mean, okay, fill out them seven questions. I mean, you can bring that form to city hall, or you can, you what, mail it to the county?
Well, you, if you do it online, it automatically goes to the county.
Oh, okay, okay.
Online, and it automatically goes, and the county notifies us, because we have to, uh, via computer, we're in contact with the St. Louis County Auditor's Office about who has applied for an absentee ballot, because we have to know who to send ballots.
So you either, you either do it online or you request one from city hall and you bring it back city hall if you want.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's all. I was just trying to clarify that. Counsel, anything else on that?
I got, I got something to, to say to Bill over this. Hey, Bill?
Yep.
Um, bet again, I'm gonna vote early on November third.
I was worried about you the other, you weren't there at seven one the other day.
Okay, so no, uh, activity needed on that one. Uh, miscellaneous, I just have a quick thing. Bill, when we start, when, when are we gonna have our first budget meeting? Are we thinking about that?
Well, all the budget, all the budget information, um, has gone out. Eileen is working with all the department heads. Um, we expect to have a draft of the budget to you, um, prior to the last meeting in September, because the levy has to, the initial levy has to be set and submitted to the county before the end of September. So the goal is to get a draft of the budget, um, prior to the last meeting in September, um, for conversation. If we need to have a working session, uh, fine. Um, but the intent is to have a, a pretty good draft as submitted by the department heads for council review so that when you set the initial levy, that you have some numbers to base your decision on, I know the last year or so. Um, it's been, that information, um, maybe hasn't been available in a timely manner. Um, the goal is to have, again, a full draft before that last meeting in September, which gives us then, once initial levy's set, to fine tune the budget. It gives us some months of October, November. We'll have the truth in taxation, uh, meeting first part of December, and, and of course, the final budget gets set before year end.
Okay. Counsel, else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Support.
Uh, by Counsel Lance, motion made by Counsel Campbell. Margaret, take a vote. Uh, you know what, all in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.